Yes.
Thank you. Well, the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission for Wednesday, June 3rd, 2020, please come to order for the benefit of all of us. This is our fourth time hosting a virtual planning and zoning meeting. Our procedures will be as follows. One, when you first enter the meeting, you'll be in the virtual waiting room until the meeting host admits you, which will take approximately five minutes prior to the posted start time of the meeting. Two, please be aware that your camera, if you have one, and your microphone will be muted by the meeting host when you enter the meeting. You can turn on your camera at any time, so you can be seen by others if you wish and choose to do so. In order to run an efficient orderly meeting in this new virtual environment, unless stated otherwise, the meeting chairman, by the meeting chairman during the meeting, the meeting host will keep everyone other than the commission members muted. You will still be able to hear everything said by the commission members, even if you are muted and your camera is not on. There will be the opportunity for public comment during public hearings, at which time participants will be unmuted. Three, the secretary will read the call of the meeting as published according to Governor Lamont's Executive Order 7B. Four, during public hearing, the applicant will be invited to present the application, explain to the commission and others what is being requested. The meeting host will share all related documents on screen as needed. In addition, all applications and supporting materials for each application on the agenda are available through the public meeting calendar page of the town website, www.cigilford.co.us, also through the clerk, the direct link on the planning and zoning page. Five comments of town agencies will be read for each application, if there are any. There will be clarifying questions from commissioners. Six, there will then be the opportunity for clarifying questions from the audience. Please raise your hand to the Zoom platform and wait to be called on. Should this function, to this feature malfunction, please send a chat. We're actually not doing chat, I should scratch that. First, those who wish to support the application may come forward. Second, those who oppose the application can then come forward. As this is a public hearing, it must be recorded as necessary for speakers to identify themselves each time they speak by stating their name and address. Seven, the applicant will then have the opportunity to address any questions or concerns raised by the public or commissioners. Once the public hearing is closed, the applicant is free to leave or remain for the balance of the public hearings in the regular meeting, at which time the commission will try to reach a decision on each application. Each applicant will be notified in writing as the decision of the commission has the right to appeal to Superior Court if desired. Nine, decisions of this meeting are available the day after the meeting by calling the Planning and Zoning Department, (203) 453-8039, or emailing planning.zoning@ci.gilford.co.us after 9:00 AM. All voting actions taken tonight by the commission will be on a roll call vote. All commissioners and staff will identify themselves for the record before speaking. Seated this evening are the following members. I'd ask that you raise your hand and identify yourself. Richard Wallace.
Yeah.
Richard. Sean Cowesgrove. Very good. Jamie Stein.
Here.
Thank you. I'm Phil Johnson. Matt Yerzinski.
Present.
Thank you. Frank DiAndrea. Hey, Frank. Alan Brown.
Here.
Thank you, Alan. Did we ever get Scott in or not? Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm here.
Scott, sorry. Put my check next to you. Thank you. Staff present are George Crawl, Town Planner, Aaron Mannix, Zoning Enforcement Officer, Lisa Piambino, Planning and Zoning Administrative Assistant. This meeting will be recorded via the Zoom platform and made available on the town website for viewing. The secretary will now read the legal notice.
Notice is hereby given that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on the following applications on June 3rd, 2020. Due to the COVID-19 situation, this meeting will be conducted through a web and phone meeting only. Attendees are advised to not go to the regular community center location because a physical meeting will not take place. Mark Knapp, 94 Great Harbor Road, MAP 7, Lot 7, Zone R1, special permit in coastal area management to build a new home on a lot less than 10,000 square feet. Furbacks Properties, Inc., 201 Soundview Road, MAP 42, Lot 118-4, 5, and 6, Zone I2, special permit coastal area management and site plan for modification to original approval to include grading changes, addition of railing to the east side, and relocation of ADA parking. Join the Zoom meeting in the link. Meeting ID 95817810918, password 286299. Dial by your location. 19294362866, US, New York. Meeting ID 95817810918, password 286299. Find your local number dated at Guilford, Connecticut, this 20th day of May 2020, and post it on the, on the Town of Guilford website, www.cigilford.co.us, in accordance with Governor Lamont's Executive Order 7B. Phil Johnson, Chairman.
Very good. Thank you, Matt. So, we're gonna start with the first item on the public hearing. Mark Knapp, 94 Great Harbor Road, MAP 7, Lot 7, Zone R1, special permit in coastal area management to build a new home on a lot not less than 10,000 square feet. I think it is less than 10,000 square feet though, right? Aaron?
Yes. It is less than 10,000 square feet. That's correct.
On a home on a lot less than 10,000 square feet. Great, very good. Mr. Knapp and/or, for Mr. Knapp?
Yes, Mark Knapp is here. Let me, um, yep, Mark, you're unmuted, and I see your engineer is here as well.
Yes, so I'll begin. Hello, everyone. My name is Mark Christian Lee Knapp. I'm grateful for the, this opportunity to present my plans for a single-family year-round house that will serve as my primary residence to the Planning and Zoning Commission. The house will be built to replace a previous larger year-round house that was destroyed by fire. I began this process speaking to the town officials and staff on or around September 2018. In truth, the gathering for information, et cetera, started before that. I've spoken with Aaron Mannix, the zoning enforcement officer, and Janice Plaziac, the town engineer, on several occasions. I've dutifully followed their guidance and recommendations to the best of my ability. So, for this proposed structure, proposed house, I have reduced the livable area of the proposed structure to 94 square feet less than the previous house. I've elevated the structure at a considerable engineering expense. I've relocated the structure outside of the flood zone, the VE zone, and we can discuss that on the site plan later. By the way, by relocating the house, I've reduced the encumbrance on my, my neighbor's views there, and it's a, it's a desirable view. I've met all the setback requirements. I've had soil testing records, or soil testing done and recorded with the town, an A2 survey, T2 survey, site plan, CAM application, application for special permit, septic system design, foundation design, modular house design, certificate of permission. All of these items, all, all these items and documents were professionally prepared. I followed the zoning regulations and public health codes to the best of my ability and to the standard of care of the professional engineers that I engaged. By the way, I'm electing to use construction to limit the disturbance to neighbors, and stick houses can be built for cheaper than, than this house. I've also decided to build off-season just because I think it's the right thing to do. With me to help me present today is my civil and site plan engineer, Matt Niski, PE, of Giuliano Associates. My septic system engineer, Mike Harkin, is unfortunately unavailable. He does a lot of this type of work on coastal properties, and he's at town hearings for other towns this evening, but he did provide a letter and a annotated septic system plan that's, he's, that should be helpful for our discussion this evening. And let's see if there were any, anything else I wanted to mention? I'll just say that the septic system as designed meets the public health code and was approved on November 5th of 2019 by the Director of Health, and I look forward to this discussion, and thank you very much for your time.
Great.
Okay, Mark. Matthew, would you like to present the site plan? Some details of that, I could share that screen?
Yes, I can.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna put up your revised survey then.
Perfect. While she's working on that, for the record, my name is Matthew Niski, PE, from Giuliano Associates, or in this case, A2 surveys. As you can see, the site plan is the house. The foundation remains of the original house that did burn down are shown to the best of our ability. They were pretty close to the seawall. That's what separates this property from the Long Island Sound. As Mr. Knapp did say, the house is being shifted away outside of the flood zone, outside of the VE zone. We are also raising this. I'm sure everyone has heard in the past that FEMA has been raising their flood elevations, so Mr. Knapp thought it prudent to raise the house up now. So, if in the near future FEMA does change their flood zones, the house is still technically outside of the flood zone. At the front of the property, and in this case, we're gonna note the north side of the property by Great Harbor Road, you will see a garage there. I believe it is 410 square feet. That is to remain. Pretty close to it is the house, and again, this was done to move that as far away from the seawall Long Island Sound as possible and outside of the flood zone. The, by doing this, the house is also outside of the CAM zone technically, but because the property is in there, there is a CAM application in front of you. As part of the construction, the seawall, or excuse me, not the seawall, the foundation remains from the old house will be removed and restored. That is also where the septic is going. And then the location of the septic, I'm just gonna speak quick about that, is due to the well locations for 94 Great Harbor Road and the two adjoining, as you can see by the circles on the site plan. This left a very small area for the septic to go, which is where the soil testing was done and the final design of the septic went. And I believe that is it. Mark, did I miss anything?
No, I think, I think you've covered it all, Matt. There are some, some memos, I believe, from the town staff.
That's correct. I can also show Mike Harkin's plan.
Yes, please, I think that'll be helpful.
This is the original letter you were referencing, Mark, the November 12th. I apologize, it's very small on my screen. Not sure if it is on yours as well. But this is, this is the design from Mike Harkin. And are you comfortable describing it, Mark, or would you prefer that I?
I can walk through it briefly. I think what would be very helpful for this discussion, the plan that's been annotated with color that Mike Harkin provided on the second. Basically, this, it's the same plan, he just adds some, some colors to help show the, the radii, the 75-foot minimum radii between the existing wells and the property. Yes, exactly. So, we can see in red, the, the well for 93 Great Harbor, the adjacent neighbor, and the, the radii there, exactly. The red dot for the well at 94 Great Harbor, the, the red curve for, for that radii there, and that in many ways bounds where the, the septic location is allowed to be. You see the green lines indicating that it has to be setback from the property lines, and the blue indicating it has to be far away from the, a distance away from, from the, from the body of water there. One point to mention is that the, this site plan does not show the deck, and that is the correct piece. I applied and received a variance for the house without the deck, but from the ZBA, and they also, to the extent that it's under their purview, they approved the CAM application that corresponded with that. That, for now, I believe will suffice. I will just mention, if we could switch quickly back to the site plan, please, Aaron?
Sure.
Thank you. The...
I'm working on quickly, but...
That's okay. The house has been located as far inland as physically possible. So, there's an existing garage. There's a required six-feet, I'll call it standoff. Matt Niski knows the better term, but standoff between the existing garage and the new house, as I'm chance related to kind of a fire safety issue. You can't have two buildings adjoining, like on the same, with, with their walls touching, to put it simply, I suppose. And at this point, I think if there's discussion of the, the town memos, that might be appropriate.
Aaron, do you wanna read in your own memo, or do you want me to do it?
Sure, I can read it, that's fine. Let me just get to our right here. This is a memo, June 2nd, to the Planning and Zoning Commission from Aaron Mannix, Zoning Enforcement Officer, regarding 94 Great Harbor Road, the KNAPP CAM special permit application for new single-family dwelling on a lot less than 10,000 square feet. The applicant is proposing a replacement year-round single-family dwelling on a 7,226 square foot lot in an RS1 zone. Previous residence was destroyed by fire, and currently a detached garage exists on the property. The applicant was granted a variance for increased lot coverage of 22.2% by the Zoning Board of Appeals on May 27th, 2020. The lot coverage variance does not include the rear deck, and the applicant has removed the structure from the application before you. The town engineers raised concerns regarding the design of the proposed septic system and compliance with the floodplain ordinance. In addition, questions were raised by the Health Director as to site feasibility for a redesigned system that could comply with both flood and state health code requirements. Lastly, when the proposal was referred to CT Deep for comments, concerns were raised as to potential impacts on coastal resources. It was recommended that the house shape be reconfigured and placed closer to the road, utilizing side yard variances if necessary to avoid placing fill walls and a septic system in the VE flood zone near the waterfront. While a coastal application was heard by the Zoning Board of Appeals, it was limited in scope to the variance request. As staff raised the above mentioned concerns at the time of the variance hearing, the board felt these matters should be addressed at the time of P&amp;Z committee review. Please refer to the staff reports of the town engineer, health director, and environmental planner for additional information. The commission may weigh the concerns of town staff, CT Deep, and determine how best to proceed with this application. Should the commission feel additional information is necessary, this hearing may remain open for 35 days without an extension. I think we've got, this is the letter from Deep. If you wanna read that?
Sure.
Anybody wants to read that one in?
Planning and Zoning Commission, Town of Guilford, care of Kevin McGee, Environmental Planner, 50 Boston Street, Guilford, Connecticut, RE, Coastal Site Plan Review for New Residents on an undersized waterfront lot at 94 Great Harbor Road, and mandatory referral for flood and erosion control walls in a VE flood zone, Mark Knapp, applicant. Dear Commissioners, thank you for referring this Coastal Site Plan Review received February 24, 2020 to us for review and comment. Project descriptions. This subject property is an undersized waterfront lot of 6,969 square feet, which hosts a garage and the foundation remains of a single-family residence lost in a fire in an RS-1 summer cottage district, a new 1,00406 square foot elevated year-round residence is proposed entirely in the X-zone. The first floor elevation has not been provided, the existing garage will remain. The proposed lot coverage will be increased to 32%. It's unclear what the square footage of the previous residents had been, and whether the new house size will be increased. It's also unclear whether the new residents will be sighted in the same footprint of the previous residents. Although the entire residence is proposed in the X-zone, FEMA flood zone lines are not exact and may differ by as much as 15 feet. We strongly recommend reconfiguring the shape of the house and placing the residents closer to the road, utilizing side yard variances if necessary in order to avoid fill, placing fill walls and septic system in a VE flood zone near the waterfront. The lot is exceptionally small and originally sized for seasonal summer cottages, and sitting in a year-round three-bedroom house and septic system on the site without adversely impacting coastal resources is difficult. Flood zones are coastal resources in that they should be reserved for their intended purpose to allow the free flow of waters across land and protect property further inland. As proposed, the new of structures, wall and fill in the VE zone may serve to ramp up floodwaters and cause scouring and ecological damage as potential damage to elevated residents on the site. We recommend sighting the proposed residence and septic system as close to the road as possible without the proposed fill and constructed walls in the VE-15 flood zone. Coastal resources on this waterfront are significant in this undersized waterfront lot, it's really hard to reevaluate that.
Sorry.
Waterfront lot, and include rocky shorefront coastal waters, coastal hazard area, VE-15 and X, flood and erosion control walls. The engineered septic system will utilize fill and three-foot walls on three sides to hold up to a three-foot of fill in place. The walls in the VE zone are considered flood and erosion control walls, which require mandatory referral to our office for comment. Under FEMA guidelines, this proposal is problematic because both the fill and the walls are viewable as obstructions in the VE flood zone. We believe that a redesign of the year-round residence or constructing a seasonal residence instead could avoid constructing three proposed walls to protect an engineered septic system and three feet of fill in the VE flood zone. Adding three feet of fill in a VE flood zone where waves of up to three feet in height is undesirable and potentially damaging to the environment, reconfiguring the shape of the house, making the house smaller, or building a seasonal cottage as zoning district calls for in this undersized lot and moving the septic. Can we go up?
Yes.
And moving the septic system would possibly employing a holding tank instead could avoid placing fill and potentially polluting septic in the VE flood zone. The commission and the applicant should be aware that the septic systems sighted in the coastal high hazard areas frequently fail, and obstructions such as the proposed wall will have the unintended effect of allowing floodwaters to ramp up and onto and into the residence, a highly undesirable outcome. Proposed septic system in flood zones, page 25 FEMA Technical Bulletin 5, Free of Obstruction Requirement states the following about septic systems. Post-disaster assessments show that buried septic systems and mounded septic systems in V, in V zones frequently are exposed and/or displaced. In addition to compromising their subsequent use, damage to these systems can release their contents. Septic systems frequently are destroyed if they are near the shoreline. Therefore, septic systems should be located either outside areas subject to erosion during the base flood, or placed in an area subject to erosion below the depth of expected erosion. This latter stipulation may conflict with septic system under, the septic system groundwater considerations, in which case septic system is not appropriate for the area. Septic system tanks must not be structurally attached to the building foundation. Plumbing and piping connections will be required, and each items are allowed in VE zones. However, plumbing and piping components must not attach or pass through break, breakaway wall panels. Excavation to place the lowest floor at the BFE is not recommended and may in fact violate NFIP regulations not to alter sand dunes if such alteration increases potential flood hazard. Mounded septic systems can require significant volumes of fill, which if placed under or immediately adjacent to buildings will likely constitute an obstruction that diverts flood flow and waves. Mounded septic systems may be allowed in V zones if they do not worsen flood and wave conditions for the buildings they serve or other nearby buildings. See the, see the discussion in the section fill for guidance and evaluating mounting systems near elevated buildings. An additional consideration for septic systems in V zones is addressed by Section 60.3A 62 of the NFIP regulations, which requires onsite waste disposal systems be located to avoid impairment to them or contamination from them during flooding. FEMA 348 provides additional guidance. State permits, although the site has a seawall and stairs, no permits for this site have been issued by our office. Seawall appears to be pre-1995, and the applicant may apply for a certificate of permission to retain the seawall and stairs. We respectfully request the commission postpone its vote on the application for the residence until the property owner has applied to us to retain these two structures within the state's jurisdiction conclusion. We hope that these comments are helpful to the commission pursuant to CGS Section 22A-110. We request these comments be read into the record at the public hearing for this application. If we can be of further assistance to you in this or any other coastal management or Long Island Sound-related matter, please feel free to contact me at 860-424-3138. Sincerely, Carol Zomansky, Environmental Analyst to Land and Water Resources Division, Bureau of Water Protection and Land Reuse.
Is it appropriate to respond to each memo in turn, or shall I wait until all the memos have been read in?
I think it's probably easy, easier for everybody if you kind of do them as we, as they come up, so we don't have a big pile and have to try and call them.
I tend to agree with you, I thought so as well, but I was gonna leave that to the commission. You folks know how these things are done. So, perhaps we can scroll back up to the, the top of the DEEP.
To include, Mark, there was a revision here from Carol's letter. You had responded to her and provided that, so I just wanted to make sure that you...
Okay, yes.
Showed that you addressed some of her questions as well.
Yes, yes.
For the square. But I'll, I'll come back up.
So, just moving through a few of these points, the lot size that's given is not correct in the memo. The size of the house, the square foot, the 1406 square feet is not correct. It's 1,188 square feet of living space. It was a year-round house previously. We have tax assessors' records to show that. The lot coverage has been approved by the ZBA?
Mark, if I may just come in for one second, just to clarify a point for the commission here. The town regulations state that lot coverage is building, deck, just kind of structures, whereas for the CAM application, lot coverage is anything impervious. So, that is why there is a difference in lot coverage. For the CAM, they do include driveways in that, and that's why that is a lot, is the 10% higher versus what is in the application. So, I just wanted to make that point clear.
Sure, thank you, Matt. So, the lot coverage has been approved by the ZBA. The, the square footage of the previous residence is known by the Town of Guilford. There are assessors' records that is included in the set for our hearing this evening. And, and therefore, it is demonstrable that the exit, the proposed house will be smaller square foot, square footage of livable space. There's some mention of the house being entirely in the X-zone, but FEMA flood zones are not exact and may differ, all the more reason why I took Janice Plaziac's recommendation, Janice Plaziac being the town engineer, to elevate the structure. So, those concerns in my mind are alleviated. I don't quite see how a, a side yard variance would help in this case. The, like I said, the house, the proposed house is as close to the road as it can possibly be located. The, the width of the house and the width of the garage and the required six feet in between structures won't allow the house to be moved any closer to the road. Let's see. So, this lot originally had a year-round house on it, and from property record cards available online for the Town of Guilford, that house was there in 1900. So, and it's also on the tax assessors' record. So, originally, it was a year-round house. The, the point regarding the allowing the free flow of floodwaters across the land makes sense, and that's all the more reason why the house is, is elevated and located further inland, so it's an improvement upon the previous. Let's see. And there's a recommendation to cite that proposed house and, and septic system as close to the road as possible. That's been done by, by two engineers. There's a mention, looking at the third paragraph on page two, of, of the septic system causing the unintended effect of allowing floodwaters to ramp up and onto and into the residence. I highly doubt that, given the, the house is elevated. The, there's mention under the, the FEMA quotation, the FEMA Technical Bulletin quotation of mounted septic systems can require significant volumes of fill, which if placed under or immediately adjacent to buildings likely constitute obstruction, et cetera, et cetera. The... The septic system fill is not placed immediately adjacent or under any building. And regarding the state permits, so upon receipt of this letter back in March, I applied and submitted all the required paperwork and fee for the the what is the language certificate of permission that they requested. So when DEEP respectfully request that the commission postpone its vote until the on the application for the residence, until the property owner has applied to us to retain these two structures within the state's jurisdiction, I've done so as the DEEP recommended, and I have the application number two zero two zero zero five two zero six dash C O P for certificate of permission. That application number is given by DEEP after you pay the fee and submitted the appropriate transmittal form. I'm just very quickly, we'll jump back. We previously read in a memo from the planning and zoning enforcement officer. So I'll just touch on a few points there. The house is placed as close to the road as possible, given the location of the existing garage and the six foot setback or standoff. Moving the house doesn't, if it were possible, doesn't mean I can relocate the septic system because there's a minimum radius that must be maintained between existing wells and the septic system and Mike Harkin, the PE professional engineer in charge of and responsible for the septic design notes that in his letter, which we'll have read in in a bit. And as I mentioned, the the length of the garage along the road and the width of the house is such that you can't fit both of them adjacent to each other or across the fifty foot lot. The again, the house location is not the limiting factor for the location of the septic system. It's the it's the adjacent wells and I'll mention the CAM application was heard and approved by the ZBA to the extent that it's under their purview. Obviously, it has to be. The CAM application that it is has to be approved and heard and approved by the commission this evening, if they deem it appropriate or not. I, at some point before the meeting concludes or the public comment concludes, I would like Mike Harkins letter read in, but it can be after the town memos as well. So that's what I had in response to what we've been presented thus far.
Mark, did, just a quick question, did
Please.
Did you? I mean, I certainly appreciate the placement of the septic, especially in relation to the proximity to wells. Did you look into a tank system as opposed to a septic system?
And a tank system meaning a holding tank?
That that was one of the suggestions of the letter from Carol Zemansky.
Sure, sure. So various septic systems and multiple septic systems were analyzed for their suitability for the site. It is the opinion of the professional engineer that I engaged to perform the design of the septic system that holding tanks are not allowed in Connecticut. And that was also expressed to me by the individual responsible for performing the excavation during the soil testing. So there I engaged a contractor, for lack of a better word, to use a backhoe and excavate test pits. Well, not test pits, but I'll call them perhaps the engineers on the column or the proper or the town officials know the appropriate word, but to dig holes and he was indicating that that he's not seen or that holding tanks were not allowed for first, I guess sewage, for lack of a better word, currently. There was mention of, I think, well, we'll touch on another point later.
Should we be found engineers?
Is that accurate, Aaron, in terms of holding tanks in Connecticut?
For the health code?
I'm just throwing it out. I mean, I don't know.
That would be a question for Dennis.
I mean, am I wrong or does Walmart have a holding tank?
Walmart has a deep approved system. That's a it's a state regulated system. I don't believe it's, I believe they have leaching fields as well.
Didn't Carol Zemansky mention in her memo something about a holding tank being a preferable option?
There's there, there could be other other options. I'm not sure if Dennis discusses them in his memo or not. I was kind of, we can, we can jump to Dennis if you'd like to read that the health director's memo first, or if you'd like to get, most of the questions seem to be from staff relating to flood regulations. And I think Janice's letter may shed a little light on on our questions from staff and then Dennis's and then.
Scott, you want to tackle this one?
Sure. This is to the planning and zoning commission from Janice Plazniak, town engineer dated April thirteenth, twenty twenty. RE ninety four Great Harbor Road CAM. I've reviewed the site development plan for the above referenced property. The proposed house construction is compliant with the town of Guilford floodplain management requirements for VE zone. Although the house location is not within the map's special flood area hazard area and therefore not required to be elevated. This approach is reasonable since the ground elevation of the location of the house is below the BFE of the adjacent VE fifteen. The proposed septic system with grading and retaining walls is troublesome. I am concerned it is in the VE fifteen zone and being built in a way that can cause wave run up and deflection to the property next door and ninety three Great Harbor. Is there anywhere else the septic system can be installed so that it does not potentially cause wave run up? Can the applicant show an analysis of wave run up that won't impact adjacent properties? The other concern is that the septic system itself will be vulnerable to damage during a storm event. These concerns are covered in the town's floodplain management ordinance quoted below. Article three provisions for flood hazard reduction. Section one seventy four dash eighteen general standards. G. New and replacement sanitary sewer systems shall be designed to minimize or eliminate infiltration of floodwaters into the system and discharges from the system into floodwaters. H. New and replacement onsite waste waste disposal systems shall be located and constructed to avoid impairment to them or contamination from during flooding. I, in all flood zones, new and replacement underground tanks shall be anchored to the prevent flotation, collapse and lateral movement under the conditions of the base flood. Section one seventy four dash twenty specific standards. Section B, construction standards in coastal highs hazard areas, zones V and coastal AE. Located within the special flood hazard areas are areas designated as coastal high hazard areas. These areas have additional flood hazards associated with wave wash, erosion scour and high wind. Therefore, the following provisions shall apply. Seven, there shall be no fill used for structural support. Minor grading and the placement of minor quantities of non-compactive fill shall be permitted for landscaping and drainage purposes under and around the buildings and for support of parking slabs, pool decks, patios and walkways installed at current grade. The fill must wash out from the storm surge, thereby rendering the building free of obstruction prior to generating excessive loading forces, ramping effects or wave deflection. Town engineer shall approve design plans for landscaping aesthetics. Fill only after the applicant has provided the analysis by a registered professional engineer, architect and or soil scientist, which demonstrates that the following factors have been considered. One, particle composition of fill material does not have a tendency for excessive natural compaction. Two, volume and distribution of fill will not cause wave deflection to adjacent properties. And three, slope of fill will not cause wave run up or ramping. Aaron, could you scroll up for me, please? Unless that's the end.
That's it.
Okay.
Mark, you want to potentially address any of the concerns brought up in that memo?
Yes, please, thank you for the opportunity. So the, again, the location of the nearby wells governs the governs the location of the septic system, not not the proposed house. So relocating the house would not assist. I'll mention that the the septic system is is compliant with the health code. The fill is not being used for structural support, it's being used for the septic system. So it's not being used to support the structures. The commentary on fill not being used for for structural support in my mind doesn't apply. And the proposed septic system has been located as far inland as possible. Ninety three Great Harbor Road, the property that's adjacent and mentioned in the the town engineer's memo. If you look on the site plan, Aaron, if you are able, could you assist by please pulling up that site plan? You'll see that ninety three Great Harbor Road is partially within the VE zone and the septic system of ninety three Great Harbor Road of again, of ninety three Great Harbor Road is within the VE zone. So I have some reservations about the validity of concerns over wave wave ramping up action. If the property that is causing the concern is already in the flood zone and mind you, not not elevated. Obviously, concerns over the flood zone have caused me to elevate the house. And that was the recommendation of the of the town engineer.
I think, am I reading this right, Aaron, that part of the concern is the retaining wall is basically create wave action? I mean,
Correct, that that's the question that that the amount of fill on these retaining walls would create this this ramp effect to potentially increase wave action on adjacent property.
But Aaron, can you point, can you point out the where the retaining walls are?
Yes, let me show you on the septic plan.
Thank you.
And then I think maybe to Mark, it would be a good time to put in, give you Mike Harkins' letter in response to Janice's letter. These are the retaining walls here. These hatched.
And
As we're looking at that, the shoreline is to the left.
To the right, the water is here.
To the right, to the right, I'm sorry. So the concern is that if the waves come in, the retaining wall
Right.
To the to downward towards ninety three Great Harbor.
Is Aaron, is there, this is Scott, I'm in, is there an do they have any sort of, do they talk about, when they're talking about wave action, are they talking about from from the sound or from the tributaries coming in?
No, this is a velocity zone on the shorefront. So we have some, we have still water, which is an AE zone. And then you have a VE and that's where you for have the potential for wave action. And so the, you know, hence the the need for breakaway walls and free flowing.
Certainly, certainly if the water is coming from the tributary, which is to the upper part of this map, then
This is, this is the sound here.
Your location point is helpful in the top right of this.
So that's what I'm saying is the tributary for this inlet or whatever is if it was, if the flooding was coming from that direction, then ninety three wouldn't be an issue. But if it's the wave action that we're talking about that's coming from the sound itself, you can see that the waves would bounce off this retaining wall and then bounce into that. Correct.
Aaron, let me, let me do a screen share, Aaron.
Just as a, as a point of reference, this system is filled to these retaining walls and that's the ramping effect is that you've got a grading, a gradient coming down lower and you're creating that that ramping effect with this fill. So it's, it's also the extent of fill within those retaining walls.
Two, two points to that. So the retaining walls are not three feet high for the full height of the retaining wall. It they should be, it should be mentioned that they slope as they move inland till you till you reach that that full height of the fill. And then the other point is that the predominant wave action, one would imagine, is coming from the sound, not from the shore. So waves are going to be coming more than likely from the bottom right of this, this plan and moving up and to the left. If you look at the location map in the top right of the of the drawing, I don't see waves coming from exactly, exactly. And I think the point is well made. I don't see waves coming from the estuary draining into the, I'll call it bay there. And I see them coming from Long Island Sound, as you would expect in a storm.
I think one of the things that Janice had mentioned is a potential wave action study to that that could answer that question that you have.
Sure.
Scott.
Yeah.
You wanted the
Screen. Do a quick screen share?
Yeah.
This hopefully will, so this is just Google Earth. And I'm going to zoom out for a sec. So I, I don't think, you're not getting wave action coming this way. If, if anything, you're getting it coming this way. You know, potentially depending on the direction of any storm and the wind, obviously.
Sure, the whole area is designated as as a VE.
And so the the house with the, I guess, Janice's concern is this one?
Right.
That is.
Ninety three.
Is is the concern wave action coming this way and into the house or coming this way and bouncing off the walls?
She she would have to clarify that for you, Phil.
Okay, sorry.
That's the crux of my question too, Phil, thanks.
All right. Why don't we grab Mark Harkins' letter? Matt, you want to grab that one? Aaron, I guess we'll pull that up on the screen for you.
I got it.
Okay. This is this is from Harkin Engineering to the town of Guilford. Attention Planning and Zoning Commission, fifty Boston Street, Guilford, Connecticut, zero six four three seven regarding the septic system design. Ninety four Great Harbor Road, Guilford, Connecticut, map seven lot seven. Dear commissioners, this is dated June second, twenty twenty. Dear commissioners, due to scheduling conflicts, I am unable to take part in the P and Z meeting for the above referenced project, but I thought it necessary to describe my role as part of the design team. My office was retained by the owner, Mr. Mark Knapp, to design the subsurface sewage disposal system, septic system at the site. Mr. Knapp had already hired a site engineering firm for the other design aspects of the project, utilities, house location, driveway, et cetera. So my role was limited to the proposed septic design. Upon starting the septic system layout, I was presented with an A two T two survey map as prepared by by a licensed land surveyor and soil testing results. Soil testing was conducted in the presence of the town of Guilford Health Department prior to my involvement with this project. The soil testing results showed that there was shallow ledge rock within the soil area testing. The test holes had varying ledge depths thirteen feet to twenty four feet. Or no, that's inches.
Inches.
That's inches. The test holes had varying ledge depths thirteen inches to twenty four inches from natural soils. The Connecticut Public Health Code requires that a bottom that the bottom of a septic system shall not be less than forty eight inches to ledge rock. Hence, the bottom of this had to be raised approximately twenty four inches out of the existing ground elevation due to the Connecticut Public Health Code requirement. In order for the septic system to be installed properly, the sides of the septic system had to have small retaining walls constructed in order to hold the required septic fill material. Without these walls, the septic system could not be installed because the grading slash fill would spill over onto neighboring properties. The location of the septic system and components is driven by the Connecticut Public Health Code requirement that a proposed septic system be located a minimum of seventy five feet from a drinking well, twenty five feet from open water and ten feet from any property line. As you can see in the attached diagram, the existing well radii shown in red are from number ninety one Great Harbor Road, number ninety three Great Harbor Road and number ninety five Great Harbor Road. Additionally, these open water setback is shown in blue and property lines line setback shown in green. These health code setback requirements severely limit the placement of the septic system on the slots. Please note that there is no municipal water in this area to connect into. The septic system as designed by our office meets the design guidelines slash requirements of the Connecticut Public Health Code. The only way that the septic system can be moved or reconfigured is that the Guilford Health Director and the State of Connecticut Health Department would be willing to grant multiple exceptions to the design requirements as listed in the public health code. If that were to happen, then the system might be able to be relocated slash reconfigured pending additional soil testing at the site. Please feel free to contact me with any questions you may have regarding this matter. Very yours truly, signed Michael Harkin, professional engineer, consulting engineer. PE.
And I'll mention that Mike Harkin does a fair number of these coastal site plans and septic system designs. So I think he's qualified to speak on the matter. He's also indicated to me in email that he thinks that the approval of the let me use the exact wording, the approval of locating the septic system closer to wells is highly unlikely.
What other letters do we have?
This is from Dennis Johnson.
Scott, you want to grab that one?
Yep. This is to the Town of Guilford, to Planning and Zoning Commission from Dennis Johnson, Director of Health, dated April fourth, twenty twenty, subject Mark Knapp, ninety-four Great Harbor Road, map seven lot seven. The applicant's proposed rebuild of the previous fire damaged house is permitted by the public health code provided the new house does not exceed the previous habitable space floor area, bedroom capacity, or encroached into the septic system repair area. The previous three bedroom house was assessed at twelve eighty-two square feet of habitable space, and the new three bedroom house is proposed to be built at eleven eighty-eight square feet. The new engineered design septic system constructed entirely in fill has been proposed for the house and is currently being reviewed with regard to coastal flood regulations. An existing septic system of unknown capacity is also present on site. As an alternative to constructing the new septic system, the existing system could be uncovered and evaluated as to its potential for expansion or functional enhancement. Several new wastewater treatment technologies are now available, which can reduce the environmental impact of septic wastewater along coastal communities. It is recommended the applicant's proposed house rebuild be permitted with the following condition. One, a new septic system shall be constructed or existing septic system modified for the dwelling, which complies with all coastal flood zone and public health code requirements.
I think we have another one from the town engineer.
Does the site show the system?
It's not labeled, but it is shown as a circle on the site plan. I'll mention in response to the memo that the Director of Health provided. The existing septic system was exposed when the soil testing was performed. Myself, Lee Archer, and the contractor that I previously mentioned that assisted in actually excavating the holes also lifted the, I'll call it lid on the on the former septic system. It has been functionally destroyed. So the the fire that destroyed the previous house, the equipment was used to demolish and remove that, I'll say, building debris. The existing septic system is is now defunct. There's nothing of substance left. And I invite the commission to look at the lid that's on the site still. I would also mention I have severe concerns that the existing system were it still in order. I have concerns that it would meet the current public health code for Connecticut, given that the the previous system was constructed many years ago. Presumably, maybe not exactly at the time that the original structure was built, but presumably near. And the tax assessors records have that at nineteen hundred. So the other point that I'll mention is that several septic systems, several septic system designs were considered. And I left it to the responsibility of the professional engineer who, in my judgment, is well qualified to design the system. And I'll also mention that there's a letter that the Director of Health provided previously approving the septic system. So it's a bit of a reversal and yeah, and that that letter is also included in the set for this evening's hearing.
What's next up, Aaron?
Can that letter be read in?
Yes. Are you okay if we read Kevin's letter as well?
I I'll defer to the commission. I think it's remained to the letter from the Director of Health. It's still a Director of Health letter.
Yeah, there's one other one.
It's very small here, but I can make it out here. Hold on one second. This is from November fifth, twenty nineteen to Harkin Engineering, seventy-eight Wolf Hollow Lane in Killingworth, Connecticut, regarding a subsurface sewage disposal plan for ninety-four Great Harbor Road, Leet Property LLC, prepared by Harkin Engineering, dated eleven nineteen, eleven one nineteen revised. Dear Mr. Harkin, our office has reviewed the subsurface sewage disposal repair plan for the year round residence located at ninety-four Great Harbor Road. The plan depicts installation of a replacement septic system constructed entirely in select sanitary fill and contained by modular block retaining wall. The septic system is designed to accommodate a three bedroom year round house served by a private well. Based upon our site plan review, the subject plan has been approved by the Guilford Health Department, and a permit to install the septic system may be issued. I can share a letter now.
Don, you want to grab that one?
Sure, sure. Can anybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. This is from Kevin McGee, dated April ninth. Regarding coastal area management review, the applicant is proposing to reconstruct a year round residence with a new septic system located adjacent to Great Harbor. No stormwater management practices have been proposed as part of this application. The coastal resource policies applicable for the property are coastal hazard area, rocky shorefront, coastal waters, intertidal flats, and shellfish concentration areas. The site plan provides for erosion and sedimentation control measures that are designed to protect the adjacent coastal resources. The work being conducted could have an impact on the adjacent coastal resources if the erosion and sedimentation control measures are not properly installed and maintained. In order to make sure that the coastal resources are protected, I recommend the following conditions of approval. Number one, in accordance with section L of coastal area management regulations, the applicant should consider a low impact design for stormwater such as a stone trench placed under the drip line of the roof eaves. Number two, the septic system should be located as far as far the coastal resources probably said, probably means as far from the coastal resources as possible due to adjacent shellfish beds. Alternative sanitary system, which could reduce the nitrogen loading to Great Harbor, should be evaluated. Number three, the Town of Guilford zoning enforcement officer should be notified to inspect the sedimentation and erosion control measures prior to any demolition or site construction. Soil stockpiles should be contained by silk fencing and or hay bales. Soil erosion sedimentation control measures shall be maintained until vegetation is established, suitable materials installed to the satisfaction of the zoning enforcement, I'm assuming, officer. The site should be inspected daily to make sure that all construction debris has been properly disposed of in a covered dumpster.
That's the end.
Okay.
Just very quickly, so yes, these points are well taken. The septic system has been located as far away from coastal resources as possible, given the requirements to maintain the seventy-five foot minimum distance, minimum radius from nearby wells. And therefore, the septic system can't be moved, cannot be moved any further inland. Alternate, alternative septic systems have been considered. Absolutely yes to the stone trench below the roof eaves. Absolutely yes to notifying the zoning enforcement officer to inspect the sedimentation erosion, erosion control measures. Absolutely to removing the debris and daily inspection of the site, so.
How about the low nitrogen system?
I would have to defer to my professional engineer who prepared the septic system. One would assume that qualified individual would prepare, would produce a septic system that is adequate, especially given that it meets the the public health code. I'm assuming that is not even an assumption that that's going to have the proper, the proper nitrogen loading.
What do you have next, Aaron?
I believe that's all we have. The letters.
So I I have some, you know, concerns, obviously. You know, you've stated some things that you don't have. You know, that you're not a professional here, and there are some questions that have been raised as to what's permissible and what's not. So specifically, I'd like to get some clarification from Janice with respect to the wave action issue. I'd like to get some clarification on the permissibility or not of holding tanks in Connecticut. I mean, if if Mark were here and he said it's illegal, I I would take him at his word. But we have nothing in the record to that effect. Could you just pull up for a second your site plan? Can you point out where the old system is? And again, you know, whether or not Mark Harkin can certify that the functional value of that system is no longer possible or restoration of that. So is it?
If we look beyond the radius of the well for my property, there's example. This is a lid to the former septic system. That lid, in fact, is cracked and the I'll say the space that this lid previously covered after we removed it during the soil testing. There's there's debris filling that space, meaning construction debris from the previous
Again, you know, I'm assuming Mark is trying to design the best system possible. But if we could somehow get his comments with respect to the inability to repair or modify that as an existing structure, I don't know where that falls with respect to the VE zone, the velocity zone.
The, if we look at the septic system design, the old system is is very near or perhaps slightly closer to the water than the new system.
Is it not also, sorry, this is Jamie, is it not also within ten feet of a property line? Do I have that right?
I would say that's an accurate assessment, although it slipped my mind that into that did not occur to me, but you are correct.
Hey, Mark, this is Sean Cosgrove. I'm curious, given Harkins' comments about the fact that based on the soil testing, you know, you couldn't meet the forty-eight inches to ledge, and you had to bring in fill. Can you give us a sense of the volume of fill you're going to have to bring in?
We can review what's on the site plan here. I'm I'm not certain that it provides the the volume of fill. And I I don't feel that I've performed the calculation concerning what that volume of fill would be.
Yeah.
It's a good question.
You know, I just, all I'm, all I'm grabbing at is that you're you're modifying the site pretty dramatically by bringing in fill to meet current public health guidelines and requirements for a septic system. And you're in, you're in flood zone. And that, you know, that's just a we want to make sure that the fill doesn't just all go away when there's another, you know, hurricane sanding. But that's, that's what we're all concerned about.
Given some of the concerns presented and my desire to get some additional answers from qualified professionals that are above my pay grade. Would someone on the commission like to make a motion to continue?
I'll make a motion. Sure.
Before we
Is that okay with you, Mark?
Before we do that, I just had one item that I'd like to have read into the record.
Absolutely.
This is a email that I received from Anna Butter. Speaking in favor of the project, this email was addressed to me from Meredith Sibley. And I, it reads as follows, subject line, ninety-four Great Harbor Road, Leeds Island. Mark, thank you for your letter of March third for a special permit to build a house at ninety-four Great Harbor Road. This email is to indicate my support for your application for a special permit to be issued. Meredith Sibley, sixty-nine Rockledge Circle Cottage, Leeds Island, Guilford, Connecticut, zero six four three seven.
Terrific.
Mark, I just want to applaud you for talking to your neighbors. I think that's a very smart and genuine gesture.
Thank you. I've made efforts to to not disturb the summer season. And I think it was appreciated by several folks. So thank you.
So
Mr. Chairman, Phil, was the gist of, that I understand, your comments be to request that Mike Harkin attend the the continued public hearing, if it's at all possible?
That would be terrific. I mean, I think bringing his professional expertise to answer some of these questions would be invaluable. And obviously, we'll do our best to get through it as quickly as we can. And if you can present, again, kind of a list of concerns back to Mr. Knapp, that would be kind of a summarized list, because I think some were brought up and some have been addressed and some have not been. So if we can summarize that to the best of your ability for him, that would be great.
Right. Yeah, that's good.
Okay, so
Before we move to the next continuation, should we see if there's anybody on the call that wants to speak for or against? Or do you want to just continue?
We'll wait for it. Continue.
Might as well just wait until we get more information.
Phil, can I just, this is Jamie, can I just add a clarifying point to what we want to follow up with? In one of Dennis's letters, there was a reference to all types of technologies. And it would be, I think, great if if Dennis could maybe, you know, throw those out there, what he's thinking. And then also, Mr. Harkin could could respond to that.
Terrific.
I also wonder if there's a way to reduce the ramping. Maybe some, maybe the retaining wall could be adjusted to reduce the ramping effect possibly, if that speaks to Janice's question about the wave action.
Again, I think Mark Harkin would probably be the best person to address those, don't you think?
Yeah.
Yeah. So Sean made a motion. Did it, did someone second?
I did.
Okay, thank you. Just do a quick roll call vote to continue this to our next meeting in mid-June. Richard Wallace.
Hi.
Sean Cosgrove.
All right.
Scott Edman.
Yes.
I will also vote to continue. Matt Yurzinski. Where's Matt?
He shook his head, yes.
All right, well, you visually indicated that you're willing to continue and then you vote that way. Frank DeAndrea.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Alan Brown.
Yes.
Thank you. And Jamie, you're actually an alternate tonight, so we don't need to vote on it. Thank you very much.
Just to clarify, my vote was yes. I had some technical difficulty.
Thank you, Matt. Okay, let's move to our next item, which is Vibrax Properties, Inc., two oh one Soundview Road, map forty-two, lot one one. Inc., 201 Soundview Road, map 42 lot 118-4, 5 and 6 Zone I2. Special permit coastal area management site plan for modification of original approval to include grading changes addition of railing to the east and relocation of ADA parking. Chuck, I guess you're probably here for this. Can somebody unmute Chuck?
Where is Chuck? Yeah, he's unmuted.
I'm good. Good evening, everyone. Chuck Mandell, agent for the applicant. A thunderstorm is rolling through my area right now, so if I lose you, I'll be back, believe me. I'll just use my cellphone. That said, a couple of weeks ago, we were, before you guys, we had asked for a waiver due to the nature of the application and the changes of the previously approved CAM and special permit. That brings us here. Just to get this out of the way, we do not have, we did not hear from DEP, so we do not have their recommendations in front of us. We did meet with town staff and we did make several changes to the plan. We had some minor lot changes to the handicap parking. There were some guard rail issues. Aaron had alerted us to the fact about some signage that was there. But I believe the main reason that we were here was due to the extension approximately 80 linear feet of rock fill along the backside of the building, so we would have a greater area for evacuations, walkways for the animals, and it just helped for the one-on-one slope that we had back there. It was about, like I said, about 80 linear feet. It could have been the additional addition of 100 cubic yards of 20-inch minus rock. Just to remind the commission, we are, we are in an AE zone and we are not subject to velocity at all. So there is no wave action on our building. The original approval called for a retaining wall along the back of the building and almost ran the entire length of the building. There was a small break, maybe a 50-foot break mid-building, but it was to retain the slope. Due to costs and other factors, we came back again for a second time for approval with a reduced building. And with, and we were able to remove the retaining walls. We did have some rock fill, and the rest was an earthen berm that we were going to have. The original approval for the earthen berm was actually just to have grass on it. We subsequently came back with a plan that we had presented, that is before you now, that we did hire John Cunningham, and he gave us some specific plantings that will run north of the rock fill. And there is a list of quantities on that map itself. And when it was interesting, as I was listening to the previous application, based on the flood zone ordinance 174-20B7, that minor grading is allowed in flood zones and it's for, not for structural support, which this is not for structural support. And one of the other comments we had from, from Kevin was he was concerned about remaining earthen fill, but due to the phragmities that's back there, we believe that that earthen fill is just going to quickly be populated by phragmities. What's there now is a, is the rock with a structural layer of material to stabilize the rock fill. And so we believe the phragmities will not be growing, the invasive phragmities will not be growing through that adjacent to the building. I believe Aaron can, if you want to read some of the letters that were presented, just one more comment though.
Would you like to-
Yeah, just one more comment.
Site plan?
Yeah, not right this second. And we did ask Janice to comment on the fill behind the building, and she said she had no comment. She was going to wait for the DEP recommendation, so it appeared to us that Janice was not concerned about the minor grading behind the building. It was approximately, it said about 100 truckload, I mean 100 cubic yards. That might be six or seven truckloads from a triaxle. Okay. I'm done.
Do you want the site plan now?
Um, sure. If she wants to see it or you want to read-
Will the commission through the application?
Sure. If we can zoom in on the backside, oh, the marsh side. So if you look at the plan towards the backside, if you scroll down a little bit, maybe. Okay. So that heavy purple line behind the building, that was what was approved originally for the rock fill. As you can see, we extended it a bit to the south, approximately 10 feet to the south. And then to the north, it's about 80 feet. So it's approximately a 90-foot increase. Originally, there would, there would have been a retaining wall on the, on the back half of that building right now. Handicap parking and the guardrails, you know, that, that has to do with the street side. So the handicap parking had changed and there was a guardrail. And Aaron, could you scroll up a little bit more, please? And that sign location has been revised, so right now it is actually on the other side of the parking lot and outside the 10-foot buffer. Yes, exactly.
That's where it was originally?
Yeah, that's where, that's where the sign will be. Yes. And actually, if you scroll to the right, Aaron. If you look at the, there's a detail up on top. If you scroll up, there's a detail, one on 40, and it says original, yeah, so you see the original approved stone placement. And then just to the right is the additional stone placement. So you can see it extends about another 80 linear feet to the north. I do understand that we are still subject to the DEP recommendations, but we feel based on the flood zone ordinance from the town, we don't violate that. We've had two previous approvals. There were no adjointer concerns. We're not such, the building is actually above the flood zone. We are in an AE11 zone. We are a foot above the BFE for the building. And we are along a creek, and the creek, actually, there is a flood control structure by the railroad, so there would not be any wave action at all. So if there are any questions or concerns, or if you want to read Kevin's letter and yours, Aaron, or if someone wants to read it into the record, that's fine.
Yeah, we'll get our letters.
And once again, I know, I know this is a self-inflicted wound on our part, but in regards to the timing, but we really appreciate some latitude for an approval due to the economic concerns right now.
Got it. This is a letter from Kevin McGee, environmental planner, Vibrex Properties, Inc., Metro Pooch, 201 Soundview Road, Guilford, Connecticut, 06437. Assessors map 42 lot 118-4. The property owner is looking to modify a coastal area management plan for the filling within three feet of the coastal resource tidal wetlands and 80 linear foot expansion of the shoreline flood and erosion control structure. Carol Zemansky was emailed the application on May 19th in accordance with state statutes CGS Section 22A-109D. The commission must allow, sorry, the commission must allow the commissioner and the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection 35 days from their receipt to review and comment of the application before planning and zoning can render a decision. The purpose of the review is to determine if the structure is necessary and unavoidable for the protection of the infrastructure, water-dependent uses, or existing inhabited structures that predate January 1, 1980. No feasible less environmentally damaging alternative exists. All remaining adverse impacts have been mitigated on May 21, 2020. A response was received from Carol Zemansky stating that she may not be able to provide comments for the June 3, 2020 meeting since she has other coastal site plan review applications and permits to review. The site plan indicates that the concrete blocks installed along the edge of the tidal marsh must be removed when slope is stabilized. It is my recommendation that these concrete blocks be removed prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy and be replaced with a row of staked hay bales if area is not fully stabilized to the satisfaction of the zoning enforcement officer. Is that it?
Yes.
Okay. Any comments to Kevin's memo? Was it always the plan to remove the concrete block?
Yes, absolutely. Yes, absolutely. Those were temporarily put there to keep everyone, all the contractors honest in regards to the coastal jurisdiction line, and those blocks are all landward of the C J L.
Okay, thank you.
For, Phil, for, just for information purposes, and, and I would like to point out to the benefit of the applicant also, we did make a concerted effort to urge Carol Zemansky to review this application in preparation for tonight's meeting. I think a number of town officials made that request, but she was obviously unable to do so.
Well, her comments are always taken with a lot of thought, but I think generally speaking, town staff will probably have a pretty good idea about what she would say, but do we have any other items to?
Memo, Phil.
Go ahead, Scott.
This is zoning commission on June 2nd, 2020, from Aaron Mannix, zoning enforcement officer, RE Verbax Properties, Inc., Metro Pooch, 201 Soundview Road, modification to existing SP CAM and site plan approval to include various site changes. The applicant is seeking a modification to an approved site, special permit coastal site plan and site plan approval. This application results after a site inspection revealed work extended beyond the scope of the approved plans. The applicant sought to have these modifications approved administratively with a waiver of a formal application. Staff consulted with the town's land use attorney and determined that legally the proper procedure for reviewing these proposed changes would need to be include a public hearing and to the CTDEEP. Commission accepted the applications at their regular meeting on May 20, 2020, and scheduled the public hearing for June 3rd with the understanding that CTDEEP has 35 days to comment on its, this coastal site plan application. The applicant seeks to expand flat usable play yard area around the building, extending elevation 11, 22 feet, I'm sorry, 20 feet towards the southeast, 2 to 14 feet varying towards the coastal resource along the southwestern side of the building, and 67 feet towards the detention basin along the western portion of the property. This expansion of the flat surface creates additional areas of steeper slopes adjacent to the coastal resource. While one-to-one slopes are called out originally in the, to include riprap armor, the applicant extended the limits of riprap on an additional 80 feet on the slopes originally designed as vegetated. In addition, the extent of riprap encroaches, encroaches beyond the limits of silt fencing to within three feet of the coastal jurisdiction line. Areas of the slope that haven't been covered in riprap are proposed to be planted with native shrubs and trees. However, the applicant needs to provide specific numbers of species for this landscaping plan. The plan calls out for the removal of the concrete block barrier along the coastal jurisdiction line once the site is stabilized. As Kevin McGee mentioned in his letter, I agree the blocks should be removed from the area and replaced with silk fencing and hay bales prior to installation of parking areas and landscaping. Additionally, the applicant seeks to modify the dumpster and generator locations at the southeastern portion of the building. This extends grading limits in this area. Should the commission wish to approve this change, I would recommend that modified dumpster enclosure be designed in harmony with the originally approved plan. The applicant is seeking to modify the ADA parking space and sidewalk access. Additionally, they are altering the slope along the front parking areas adjacent to the drive aisle. Please see town engineer's comments concerning this area. The applicant also proposed to relocate the ground side, ground sign westerly to the site. However, the proposed location does not meet the minimum 10 feet required front setback line. This sign location should be removed from the plants. Comments have not yet been received by CTDEEP, however. The 35-day statutory deadline has not expired. Lastly, all existing conditions of the previous approval should be maintained, and prior to issuance of a final certificate of zoning compliance, staff recommends a condition that a final as-built survey be submitted to reflect final grading, drainage, and site improvements.
So why do we move the sign again?
It did not comply to zoning originally, so we moved, so the sign had moved to comply to zoning.
Okay, so the location of, as it's now, is compliant and the other location was not?
No, the way this sign is shown, it is not compliant. However, the applicant has indicated that it will go back to what was on the originally approved.
Okay.
Complying with the 10 feet.
Is that accurate, Chuck?
Yes, we, we made some revisions, Mr. Chairman, but it was, we did those today, so Lisa doesn't want to see any change. You know, it has to be 24 hours before it makes it to you guys.
Well, thank you for making those changes.
Okay.
In addition, Phil, or commission, I have referenced a memo from the town engineer. Based on the latest revisions, Janice did not need to make additional comments, so there's not a memo from the town engineer. I just wanted to-
Are there other items that we need to enter into the record?
I had one question. Perhaps Chuck, we can just clarify this. I had a couple of photos that I wanted to share from the site inspection of the area that, that shows this, this is the level flat area that the elevation 11 was extended, and this is where the riprap had, that armored slope continued. One of my concerns is in these lower areas here, this is the concrete block wall, and the silt fence is butted up right adjacent to that instead of, as it's shown on the plan, is being pulled forward a little bit. My concern is that this area here is supposed to be, or is proposed to be a vegetated buffer, and I'm concerned that there's structural fill in here as opposed to soils that are that, that would allow for adequate growing conditions. Is, is the removal of any of this proposed in, along the vegetated slopes to, to allow for plantings and plants to potentially survive?
Yeah, yeah, I can answer that. Absolutely. Any structural fill that was in there was for the construction to get the cement trucks in there or whatever cranes we needed. So anything that it, where the vegetated slopes are proposed will be removed and they will be supervised by the landscape architect to make sure that they will grow.
So that, that includes this area then? This is, this is confirmed as that structural fill that was needed for the, the large equipment?
Yes, it was adjacent to the building. Like I said, any, any area that's proposed for the plantings will have suitable material for growth.
Okay, that was, and just so that-
And we, and we can, and Aaron, we can, we can document that, and we can call you for the strip inspection, you know, as, as needed.
Okay, I just wanted to verify, because it didn't look suitable for planting.
No, no, probably at this, at this point, it probably is not suitable.
Okay, thank you, Chuck. So there's just a visual for the commission to see the block wall and the stone wall.
Can I just clarify that that block wall is coming out?
This block, yes, this is, this is the block wall that is called out to be removed.
As I said, we were very concerned during the original construction and site, so we wanted to ensure that no contractors would accidentally end up a C word of the C J L. So those, the concrete blocks were actually put there by the contractor. We put the silt fence up and we wanted to ensure that no one was going to be there. We felt that was better than using that orange construction fence, because typically, you know, contractors will hop over it. You'll, there'll be machinery down there, so that certainly prevented any disturbance, C word of the C J L. And as you can see, that has not happened at all.
You wanted it to be more than obvious.
Correct. We, we knew, we knew we were, this was going to be a very visible project.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, Chuck.
Yes.
So we, we did the memo from zoning, memo from the environmental planner. So we we did the memo from zoning, memo from the environmental planner, so I will kick it to commissioners. Anyone have any questions of the applicant? Any questions with respect to the application? So we've got a special, is that right? Coastal site plan and a CAM, is that correct?
That is correct. That was a modification to the special permit.
It's a special permit also, right?
Yes.
Okay. So I will kick it out. Are there any questions or specifically questions from the audience with respect to this application? Would anybody like to speak in favor to this application?
I'd like to speak if possible.
Sure.
Hi, everyone on the commission. I'm Kristen De La Sacco. I'm the owner of Verbax Properties here at 201 Soundview in Guilford. I just wanted to point out two comments that are of high importance to me when you consider hopefully approving this to continue without having the deeps recommendations as they are recommendations, not necessarily what we have to go by. One and first and foremost, why we made these changes were for the safety of our emergency personnel. When I walked the site after it started to be built, I realized that the slope of the backyard, which is turf, because it's a dog play yard all of the area around the building. I realized that it was unsafe for emergency personnel when they would, God forbid, need to assist us in a time of need. The the fire chief, as well as the George Cordova are on board with these changes. They have submitted their recommendations to the town and we didn't get to talk about that. Or with every one of these changes being discussed here tonight. And when we changed the back of the building and the side, it was strictly for the safety of of them. And then secondly, of course, you know, it became usable space. When I saw the slope, big portion of my business is outside and on the formally approved slope that was there on the turf, it was pretty much unusable. That wasn't known until we actually started doing the work. So I know that we do need or do like to have the deeps recommendations, but I highly, highly ask that we could forego that and just make a decision amongst ourselves because the financial implications of this could be crippling. This is a very large business coming into this town. As I've discussed with some of the members on various commissions or boards in this town, there's not many other companies that will employ this many people outside of a Walmart or a, you know, large company. But a small business like this will bring in a ton of traffic to Dunkin' Donuts, to the gas stations and everything around this Soundview area. And we're at risk, I'm at risk as the owner, I'm not even being able to open this at all. And that's concerning to me, obviously. We have millions of dollars invested into this project, so the financial implications are huge. I also would like to say that this is a very important thing for everyone to keep in mind. We have not encroached upon the CJL. So what was approved as a CJL, we have not encroached upon it. Where we added this rock, it's basically in the open air space between there and the building. So I understand there's rules and regulations and recommendations that we, as a community and as members of serving this community need to adhere to and and go by. But again, I strongly strongly ask that we can come together and make this go through tonight because it's a dire essence that it that it does. The one of the last few points that I wanted to talk about was when this was originally approved the second time, one of the board members, who I don't think is any longer on the commission here, had asked the question and said, how many dogs will we allow her to have here at one time? And I believe it was Mr. George Crawl who said it would be silly to put a number because the facility could serve as an evacuation center since we live in a shoreline town and we are raised well above the flood plain. So my concern is if you were to think back to Hurricane Sandy and remember all the visions that you saw when you watched TV, the vegetative areas that were affected didn't hold up. The ones with rock did hold up. So I just think, and this has been the opinion of other engineers as well, that a structure such as what we're requesting is a definitely more viable solution than vegetation. So I would just like to put that out there. And again, we are removing the concrete blocks. We have shared that with many members before. Safety, we have not encroached upon the CJL at all, and the financial implications are huge. And with that, I I I would hope that we can push this through this evening despite the deep not having the recommendations to us in this time. And thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak in favor of this application? Are there any comments negatively or would anyone like to speak against this application? I because it's a special permit, our normal procedures require two meetings, but I think I'm comfortable with the other than the fact we don't have DEP comments. I think I'm comfortable trying to make a ruling on this this evening. I would put it to the commissioners. Would someone like to make a motion to waive the second public hearing for special permit?
Still moved.
Second.
What do you think? Richard?
No, I think giving it back relying on comments and staff and as we've stated, that probably Kevin has hit on everything Carol Carol would have hit on. So let's go forward with it.
Sean, how do you feel about it? Sorry, I'm just trying to get as many commissioners to speak about this. I don't want to force anybody's hand.
No, I I agree too. I think that you know, while it's frustrating that they did not abide by the original site plan, I think that their explanations sound reasonable and we are in some pretty unusual times as the the owner of this facility, you know, underscored. So I I I'm fine going forward with this.
So then I think I've got, I'm going to call the vote to waive the second public hearing. Richard Wallace.
Aye.
Sean Cosgrove.
Aye.
Scott Edmund.
Yes.
I will also vote to waive. Matt Yurzinski.
Yay.
Thank you. Frank DiAndrea.
Yay.
Alan Brown.
Yes.
We'll waive the second public hearing and hear this tonight. So that is so would someone like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Richard. And Scott, second.
Second.
Again, Richard Wallace, aye or nay?
Aye.
Sean Cosgrove.
Aye.
Scott Edmund.
Yes.
I will also vote in favor. Matt Yurzinski.
Yay.
Frank DiAndrea.
Yes.
Alan Brown.
Yes.
Okay, just out of curiosity, George, do we have a prepared motion to approve and Cam and the site plan? I don't I just didn't see that.
Yes, you should have that.
I have. I saw it.
Erin?
I have. Doing that now?
If that's possible.
You're not, you haven't, oh, did you close the public hearing?
We did.
Okay. Just wanted to mention on the public hearing, you skipped over Vigliotti. It's noted on the agenda that this is to be continued to to June 17. I just wanted to make sure that that was cleared to everybody who might be looking at this from outside. That the hearing on Vigliotti is going to be continued to June 17.
Thank you, George. Sorry, I knew that. I just didn't mention it. So Erin, do you have the I don't have the motion? And it's not on the website, so if you've got it.
Are you are you looking for me to share that on the screen share?
Richard, do you have it?
Rich has it.
I got it in front of me.
Why don't you read that?
Proposed motion Metro Pooch Verbax voted that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission approve a special permit site plan and coastal site plan revision for Verbax Properties 201 Soundview Road map 42 lot 118, 4, 5, and 6 to show on coastal site plan modification. Metro Pooch dated 51420, prepared by Thomas A. Stevens Associates. The application is approved with the following conditions. See the comments from the environmental planner. See the comments of town engineer. Will just discard number three, seek the comments of deep reconsidered. This application is approved on based on its findings that conforms with the zoning code and is consistent with the coastal management policies of the state of Connecticut. George?
I'm sorry, add to the conditions, the comments of the zoning enforcement officer.
Okay, number four, the comments of the zoning enforcement officer. The application is approved based on a finding that it conforms with the zoning code and is consistent with the coastal management policies of the state of Connecticut. The special permit revision is effective on June 12, 2020 and upon filing with the town clerk.
Thank you. Would someone like to second that? Frank DiAndrea, thank you very much.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, if we could amend the date of that plan, the most recent plan we have that still doesn't relocate the sign or the ground sign was dated May 26 was the latest revision we have.
Sure, if we could note the movement of the sign to the zoning compliant location.
Mr. Chairman, I know the public hearing is closed and I can't shouldn't talk, but we do have a plan dated June 1 that you could use for the date.
Let's use your plan of June 1, assuming it shows the proper location for the sign.
Yes.
Terrific. Is that okay, Erin?
I don't I don't believe anybody's reviewed that plan. I assume that it's nothing has changed.
In that case, why don't we stick with our current plan?
Probably fine with the May 26.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
Let's stick with that then. All right, so we have a motion and a second discussion. I'll just make comment that when we eventually get DEP's comments, that I would hope the applicant will give full weight and measure to what they're suggesting. Obviously, our vote now is is, you know, I guess makes it, I'm not sure if it makes it optional or not, but you know, they're professionals and I hope they wouldn't ask you to do something that would be unreasonable. And you know, generally, we wait for those comments from deep. These, as Sean said, are strange times, so. Any other comments from commissioners or discussion from commissioners?
Well, they were actually here two weeks ago before us anyhow, so this could be like the extension of the public hearing as it was.
Except we weren't in a public hearing, we were just in an appeal to, but I think the modified site plan showing all the changes is very helpful. And with that said, I'll call the vote. All in favor of approving the motion as presented, Richard Wallace?
Aye.
Sean Cosgrove.
Aye.
Scott Edmund.
Yes.
Jamie, sorry, Jamie Dalton, I will also vote to approve. Matt Yurzinski.
Yay.
Frank DiAndrea.
Yay.
And Alan Brown.
Yes.
Very good. Good luck. Have fun.
Thank you very much.
And again, if you could give a full weight and measure to anything the DEP says, that I'm sure would be appreciated.
Well, this won't be our last time before you, so you know, we'll respect their wishes as best we can.
Great.
Thank you.
Next item is from our last meeting, we closed the public hearing on the Guilford Agricultural Society 111 Lover's Lane Fairground map 40 lot 138 zone R3 special permit to amend existing special permit regarding scheduled events. So what I'm going to do is read the proposed motion. What we've added into this is a sunset clause provision calling for the review of this special permit revisions after three years or every three years, which I would think hopefully eventually could be waived, but let me make this motion, we can discuss it and then we can go from there. Voted that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission approved the request of the Guilford Society to amend the conditions of approval regarding the special permit for the fairgrounds located at 111 Lover's Lane map 40 lot 138 as follows. One, that conditions five from the May 17, 1989 special permit be approval be eliminated. Two, that conditions one, two, and condition five from the April 13, 2016 special permit approval be eliminated. Three, that all public events must be sponsored and conducted by a not-for-profit entity and be of non and be non-commercial in nature. Commercial events conducted by a for-profit entity are allowed when said event is approved by the commission. Notice of a commercial event shall be provided to the commission at least 30 days prior to the event. The commission may hold a public hearing on the proposed commercial event and the applicant must provide notice to all of the joining name property owners at least 14 days prior to the public hearing. Commercial events must conform to the other standards of the special permit and will count toward the maximum number of days allowed pursuant to item number five. Four, that all events at the fairgrounds shall be conducted in a manner that is respectful to neighbors, recognizing the property is in historic residential zone and neighborhood. Five, from May 1 to October 31, there should be no more than 12 days, not including setup and breakdown, during which public events are held at the fairgrounds. That during the balance of the calendar year, there should be no, there shall be not more than three additional days for public events. Each day of a multi-day event shall count toward the total day limit. Public events are defined as events open to the general public. This limit shall not apply to events or activities conducted by the town for emergency purposes, training or similar purposes. This limit shall not apply to the Guilford Fair, the town fireworks display or running events. There shall be no more than six running events during any calendar year. Six, that during any calendar year, there shall be no more than three days in which private events are held at the fairgrounds. Private events are defined as events that are only open to invited guests such as weddings, family reunions and similar gatherings. Commercial events approved pursuant to number three above, which are private, are allowed in addition to the three-day limit above. Seven, for any private events, activity shall cease no later than 10:00 PM with one hour with one hour allowed for cleanup. Music, including amplified music, is allowed when accessory to the primary activity. All music for private events must end by 10:00 PM and abide by the town town noise ordinance. Eight, music, including amplified music, is allowed when accessory to a permitted public event and must cease no later than 11:00 PM. Concerts and music events where music performance is the primary or exclusive activity are prohibited. Nine, all activities and events must be conducted in conformance with the town of Guilford noise ordinance. 10, all public events taking place on the fairgrounds must be posted on the fair website. 11, notice of all events shall be provided to the Guilford Police Department and Fire Department at least 14 days prior to the event. 12, enforcement of these conditions shall be the responsibility of the Planning and Zoning Commission and the zoning enforcement officer who shall provide a report of any violations to the commission. Violations will be subject to the powers of the zoning code and the Connecticut general statutes, including the provisions for fines. 13, this special permit expires three years subsequent to the date of this permit unless renewed in accordance with the special permit provisions of the zoning code. These special permit revisions are approved based upon a finding that they conform with the zoning code. This special permit is effective on, help me out.
Next Friday, June 12, I think it is, or?
Yeah, 12, next Friday.
Correct.
202020 and upon filing with the town clerk. Okay, so.
That can.
Thank you. Discussion.
I mean, let me talk about the expiration and the the legal issue associated with it. Because that was that was discussed at the last public hearing. Several of you encouraged us to seek out a legal opinion on that subject. We did receive an email from Chuck Andrus that alluded to the fact that expiration of special permits or sunsetting of special permits is a uncertain within Connecticut law. There there are some, it's not clear. There are some, there are some cases. I think even at the appellate jurisdiction where where expirations were permitted and there are others where it wasn't. There's a pending court case Chuck told me about that may clarify this even further. Chuck and I discussed this on the phone a couple of days ago. I described him to him. I described him, to him in detail, the whole history of this property and this project and the, and the special permit conditions. And he agreed that the, if there's ever a situation where an expiration or sunset would be appropriate and therefore, and hopefully legal, this would be the type of case where that would be the case. Where, especially since we're not really dealing with the use. There's a non-profit use of this property is clearly allowed. The property, the use of the property as a fairgrounds is clearly allowed, there's never been any ambiguity about that. What we're talking about is the definition of, of the way the use is actually operated. And so we've gone to great lengths, as you've just heard, to try to define the parameters and the rules of the way the special permit might actually be exercised. And Chuck was as comfortable as he could ever be in saying that this is probably going to be acceptable legally. He was also made, I also made him aware that I thought that an appeal of this special permit is highly unlikely. Can never guarantee any such thing, but we both thought that it was highly unlikely and therefore that we, we both felt comfortable and more importantly, he felt comfortable in suggesting or recommended to you, to you that an expiration or sunset was, was going to be okay. The three years was a number, I don't even, I don't remember specifically if someone suggested the three-year timeframe at the, at the public hearing, or if I just invented that number. Whether it's a three-year timeframe or longer or shorter than that doesn't seem to make too much sense, especially since this year, there probably not going to be any activities or hardly any activities at the, at the property. Maybe whether three or five years or some other number in that range is, you know, appropriate or not is something perhaps you can discuss. It was also, there were also a couple of points made at the last public hearing about proposals to prohibit specific events. And I, I remember in particular, Mr. Schaefer suggested that we prohibit, I think he mentioned motorcycle events. He also suggested that we prohibit political events and religious events. I mentioned the latter two, to, I mentioned the latter two recommendations to Chuck Andrus and he was, he pointed out the constitutional questionableness of those two, those two prohibitions, giving the, given the Bill of Rights and all of that, but at any rate, I didn't really think that we wanted to get into the issue of trying to itemize or specifically prohibit certain types of events. If somebody proposes something totally heinous that we have never thought of, we can always fall back on condition number three or whatever it is, it says, you know, respectful of the neighborhood or something to that effect, to try to prevent it in the unlikely event that something like that were ever actually proposed. So I chose not to try to exclude or define certain specific types of events of events that would be excluded, other than music concerts, which have always been prohibited from the very beginning.
Thank you.
Phil, can I just say something?
Yes.
George, thanks for that, that's really helpful. I would just say that the most unlikely of things has happened over and over again over the past couple of years, so I, I don't think we want to, you know, preclude consideration of the possibility of that happening. Number two, I, I think it's reasonable to assume that there will not be any events in the near future, but I think a sunset is completely reasonable and, you know, whether we make it three years from the date of the first event or three years from the date that we approve this, I think that's fine. So those are my, those are my comments, I, I think a sunset is.
And again, I kind of see this as the opportunity for us all, hopefully most of us will still be here, to review, did this work, are there things that we need to change, are there ways to make it better? And it gives us a defined timeline for looking at what's taking place and making it better or leaving it as is, if it's working great.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
I don't, I don't, I don't want to have these, I don't want to have, you know, regulations are necessary. This is real, this is pretty specific and I think that a lot of it is very, very good. I don't want to have it so constrictive that, you know, the Ag Society is, you know, hamstrung to, you know, generate revenue from a very, very important property for them and for the town of Guilford. I just have, I, I do have one question for George and maybe others who've been around a long time. Why was the original, in the, in the first special permit, why were, why was the provision put in that only nonprofits could hold events on that property?
I, I can't really answer, I can't answer that question. I think the thought was that what was probably meant by nonprofit was sort of community-oriented events, which is, you know, 99% of the events that are held at the fairgrounds are community-oriented. I think that's probably what people really had in mind, they weren't really focused on the technical legal definition of a nonprofit. That's, that's just my.
I don't, George, I don't want to go back to square one, but I, I don't see, I really don't understand why it's even in this. I, I don't, I don't understand why.
Yeah, there's, I think there's a sense that, you know, that nonprofits are more likely to be sponsors of community-oriented events as opposed to for profit.
But that's, that's just.
I think it, I think it was used as a restrictive, a means of restricting type of.
Well, I mean, you think back, they, they wanted to restrict the, probably the number and type of activities that were taking place on that property. Because, you know, I grew up across the street from that property, it was, it was, it was a cow field. So people were just adjusting the idea that it was being repurposed for a fairground and, and then, then it became, you know, used for other purposes. But, you know, the, the, I'm talking about the definition of a nonprofit, I don't think that it's a useful term. But that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, let me, I wanted to say one other thing. Both Chuck asked this question and then, and Phil asked the question also, what happens at the, the time that the, the special permit expires, whatever the date might be? And what if nobody does anything? What is therefore, what are the, what are the rules that would exist at that time? And I think the way Chuck put it to me, and I think this, this is perhaps, I think this is the way it should be, is that, I mean, there are two possibilities, if the permit expires and nobody does anything, then that could mean either anything's allowed or it could mean that nothing is allowed. And I would interpret it to, I would interpret our special permit to mean if this expires and nobody does anything, meaning that the Ag Society doesn't do anything, then that means that no activities at all are permitted. And the special, the special permit which authorizes the use is, is void. So it would be incumbent on the Ag Society to make a note of that date, whatever it is, and make sure they make an application at that time to either renew it for another three years or make modifications to it or eliminate the sunset provision altogether. So it's important that, that we find, and I don't, and I think this can be expressed as a sense of the commission, that your understanding of what happens at the expiration of this sunset is that the special permit is in its entirety no longer operational and that therefore, the, it's important that the applicant request a renewal or request a modification or request elimination.
George, that's a great point, I, I think that that there should be some provision for the Ag Society to notify the planning and zoning commission within, whether it's 30 days, 90 days prior to the sunset expiration. And probably giving them three months afterwards to reapply. The fact, the fact that all the work that's gone into setting this thing up, if they, if they miss the boat and don't meet the sunset provision, and then it's all, we start all over again.
Hey Barbara, Barbara, just give me a thumbs up and send me, you'll put a big calendar item that, that.
Yeah.
You will hold this slide, Gil, I'm going to hold you too also.
Phil, you, I hope it'll be around in three years, but I, we can put a provision on the, the gate on Lover's Lane, so they just remember that they got to, you know, reapply.
There was, there was a suggestion during the public hearing part of this that this, if the sunset clause ended, that it reverted back to what we currently have with the 2089 and the 2016. Is that something that's reasonable?
Yeah, that's another possibility.
At least there's a special permit that's in place and they continue to use it. And typically, it seemed like the neighbors were fine with the current scenario, a lot of them.
Scott, that's a great point, so it would just, George, can we just say that it would just revert to the prior special?
To the current, to the current conditions.
Right, right.
Yeah, that's a good idea. So let's. Nobody like, nobody likes the current condition, so.
So it will behoove us to continue to make it happen, yes. So I'll, I'll, I'll jump in, it's no secret that I've been against the current scenario for the entire time that I've been on the P and Z commission, it's just bothered me that we were asked to be so subjective with a list that was very outdated and a 60-day period that didn't make sense, six-month period that didn't make any sense. Oh, I really want to thank George and everyone else that's been involved in this and getting this moving. It's taken a number of years, but I'm glad that we're getting to a place where I feel like, I feel like this is a lot more future-proofed in terms, like I said, I think, I said during the public part of this hearing, a list of types, I thought, a type of events I thought was never going to be a reasonable thing in terms of future-proofing, we would just, there would always be a new type of event that somebody wanted to add to the list. Same thing with size restrictions and that sort of thing, that was always going to be difficult to manage. So I really like the fact that this avoids those types of things, but still is reasonably restrictive in terms of, of what can be done on the site. I'm glad that this formalizes the noise protocols a little bit, gives a lot more specific protocol as to what happens with the noise issues. Gives the, you know, gives a process to, the, the neighbors may or may not like the process, but it gives the process to the neighbors of what is to be followed if they have noise complaints. And I liked some of the stipulations that were added, I, I like the stipulation that the police have to be notified, you know, prior to events. That's a nice thing to have there, just to make sure that that happens and there's, and then it's nice, I also finally like the sunset clause as well as the ability for us to review commercial events, that, that means that we're still involved in looking out for the neighbors, looking out for the towns' interests, but in a way that makes way more sense than just deciding whether or not this, this, in a list, we can actually deliver on something that I think, and, and really discuss whether or not it's good for the neighborhood, it's good for the, as opposed to what we were doing before, so. Thanks again for everyone's involvement and.
Everyone comfortable with me calling the vote? Oh, Richard?
Just one more comment, being around for the 2016 one, this is, has quite a bit more clarity to it. And understanding of both sides.
Yeah, I think, I think 16 was drawn up with high emotions on both sides, so. All that being said, I'm going to call the vote, all in favor of the proposed changes in special permit, Richard Wallace?
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove.
Aye.
Scott Edmund.
Yes.
Jamie, oh, sorry, Jamie, I keep doing that, I will also vote in favor of this, Matt Yurzinski.
Yay.
Frank DeAndrea.
Yes.
Alan Brown. How are you feeling about it, Alan? You're muted.
Give us a thumbs up.
Hold on.
Hold on.
I got him. How do you feel about this, Alan?
I'm okay with it, I'm okay with it.
That's what we need to hear, motion carries, we have a new special permit upon filing with the town clerk. Thank you for your patience, Barbara, we appreciate you working through it all and obviously, if you have anything you want to bring to us, we look forward to hearing from you. Okay. Next is. This one we beat.
You're on again.
The next one's town of Guilford Adams Middle School, 223 Church Street, map 53, lot 17, zone R1, site planned for construction of tennis courts, pickleball courts and parking area improvement continued from our last meeting, 5/20/20, I assume Rick's here. Hi, Rick.
There he is.
I feel like I'm having a cameo appearance every, every meeting where you guys. Appreciate you taking the time to consider this again, I have a couple of things I just want to go through with you, where we are with it. The Parks and Recreation Commission was sent the links that we received about some of the concerns with noise courts and other parks in the country. They received those and we had a meeting on Monday night, Parks and Recreation Commission meeting, they're, so again, they're aware of the issue with noise, I brought it up again. Also, we know that the neighbor's concern is there. But there's a couple of things, I, I want to make a few points and then just, you know, some questions you have. One is that there was a, a study done by, I believe it was the New Haven Foundation, that said that in Guilford between 2015 and 2025, the senior population was going to increase by 65%. So we're right in the middle of that right now, and believe me, we're seeing it with the, well, not right now so much because we're in the pandemic, but the number of lunches that we do, meals on wheels and shopping chips we're doing right now for seniors, we just see how that population is growing. And, and the interest in pickleball has been growing, we started that program eight, 10 years ago with eight people, and we have over 120 playing right now. And that's just people we know are registered in the program, not counting any other seniors that might be playing that are not part of our program. And so the, the population's growing, the need is growing, the request to build these courts was made by senior citizens, it was not initiated by me or the Parks and Recreation Commission, it was senior citizens who had made the request that we try to meet the need that they have and the increased demand for it. And being that it's the Parks and Recreation Commission's responsibility to respond to those needs, they, they want to move forward with it, so even with the, the concerns that have been expressed at the commission meeting Monday night unanimously, they decided to go forward. And so I'm going to just give a few points and I'll, I'll stop of why, other than what I've just told you why. So 120 seniors play, there are no courts designed or designated for them. We have softball fields, baseball fields, soccer, lacrosse, field hockey, basketball courts, tennis courts, skate park, splash pad coming up, bocce courts, so we, we have facilities for the recreational interests of people in the community. There was no, I shouldn't say, yes, there was no designated court just for pickleball. They can play at Adams, they can play at Lakes, however, we all know that when school's in session, the only place anybody can play tennis or pickleball is at Adams. I'm sorry, they can play pickleball if they've been there too, my mistake. But tennis, the only place tennis is allowed is at Adams School when school's in session. So then that becomes a competition of who gets it, tennis or pickleball, it's the only place during that time that they can play on, on the school grounds. The other thing I want to mention, I believe you have it, we have letters from two other residents in the area there who support the pickleball courts. One of them lives directly north of the court and he's, he's closer than anybody as to the existing tennis courts. He has no issue with the noise, a resident across the street has no issue with it. And I think I mentioned the last meeting, we've been playing there, I thought it was three years, but I've been told it's four or five years and pickleball has been going on there, to my knowledge, there has been no complaints, no complaints about noise from anybody in those five, four or five years. And lastly, one of the things we talked about at the commission meeting Monday night is that we understand some of your concerns, we understand the concerns of the neighbor and there are things we can, we'll work to do to try to mitigate the noises. One of them is we'll, we'll look at reducing or limiting times in the evening, for example. We're talking about seven o'clock, so maybe at seven o'clock, we'll have a sign saying no pickleball after seven o'clock. But we also know that the majority of our people playing are, are between 8:30 and noon. That's when most of the seniors are out playing, I can't say no one's ever going to come at five or six o'clock at night, I, I can't say that. So we can help mitigate it by limiting, limiting the, the times, we'll, we'll meet with the neighbors and we'll discuss, you know, have a conversation. a conversation with them about that. Um, we also, uh, made aware there's a ball that's a, a quieter ball. Um, one of, uh, our organizers, Judy Sullivan, who helps organize the pickleball program, she ordered a couple of them. I don't know if she's gotten them yet, so we don't know if they work well, you know, if they don't have the same bounce. Uh, we don't know. But that's something, again, we're looking into to try to help reduce the impact of, uh, noise on the, on the, uh, the neighbors there. We also are made aware of, um, some different products that are either like a curtain or, um, or, or a wall. It's a, it's a, it's a sound deadening, uh, um, wall or curtain. Again, that's something that we can look into. We can't do it, I can't commit to doing that right now because the cost of that would, we don't have money in the budget to do it. But if we, um, find that this is an issue and we find that those are effective, we could put money in the budget next year and, uh, probably if it's a wall, we'll have to come back to you for permission to do that anyway. If it's a curtain that's hung on the fence, then, you know, I don't know if we need your approval for that or not, we know. But whatever, we'll look into that. Uh, those are, we're, we're trying to do some things that, I, I guess I, the, the point I want to make is that we understand there are some concerns about it, and we will work with the neighbors to try to mitigate those, whatever way we reasonably can do it. Um, and I guess the final thing is that, you know, we believe this should be a Parks and Recreation Commission decision. They're responsible for providing facilities in the community for people. It's a, it's a property that, that is school property, town property. It's, you know, it's all the same really. Um, and there are recreational facilities there already, and we're just trying to, uh, uh, meet the needs of these seniors who, who have come to us requesting this. So I'll stop there. If you have any questions or comments, um, I think Mike Ott is on the line too, so if you have any, any more question about the design or location, you know, he'd be better to answer that.
Uh, I'll ask a quick question. And I, I'm also gonna make a comment that this is not a public hearing, so technically we don't have to accept comments from the public. However, uh, I think I'm inclined, if there are people here that would like to make a comment that somehow have not voiced their opinion, um, I'm inclined to listen to that as part of it. The other thing I'll say is that, um, this is, this is actually under our purview because it's a site plan revision. Um, so while Park and Rec might, you know, decide what they want to do, it still has to come before us for approval. So I, I'll just say. Um, and then I want to ask a quick question, whether or not, uh, in your unanimous vote, were there any alternate sites considered by the Park and Rec Commission?
We, we talked about, um, there really is nowhere else, Phil. I mean, I mean, we look at, what do we have? Chittenden Park, um, uh, Jacobs, there's really no room at Jacobs. So it's, I think it's too windy down there anyway, but you know, you, you play, you know, the wiffle ball, I think it would blow around too much with the wind there. Long Hill Park is athletic. I, I mean, anywhere else we would, we would put it, we, we'd be cutting out something else, an athletic field. Um, we did consider, is it possible at Bender Park up beyond where the skate park is now? Um, is it possible? Yeah, but at a hugely increased cost. We know there's ledge up there, uh, a lot of grading, a lot of trees have come down, uh, it would expand into, uh, the existing disc golf course. Uh, you know, we'd have to move that. Um, so we, you know, those are areas we looked into. Um, parking there, uh, you know, that back parking lot's getting pretty filled up between skate park, disc golf, hikers, dog walkers and so on right now. So y- yes, we did consider with, are there any other possible places? Uh, we actually looked into the, um, uh, where the lagoons used to be at, um, Sullivan Drive there. And I talked to Janice Plaziac about that. She said, nah, you know, the, the fill that's in there and so on, it wouldn't work there.
How about the upper old decommissioned tennis courts at Baldwin?
Those are a parking lot now. The school system needed that for more parking and so did Little League for their games up there.
Just for the heck of it, I'm gonna throw it out. Are there any questions from commissioners? Let me ask a quick question of George.
Yeah.
Are there any specific criteria that we would have to meet or in order to not approve a site plan change?
Well, as you know, the site plan is a, is a so-called administrative decision. You have to apply the quantitative standards of the zoning code to the proposed application. The, uh, I think this, uh, as Aaron has testified, this facility does comply with all of the, uh, objective standards of the zoning code. It's a use that's allowed, excuse me, uh, in the zone municipal, it's a municipal facility. Municipal, municipal facilities are allowed in all zones, uh, subject to site plan approval. Uh, as you also know, in the site plan regulations, there are some sort of general standards with, with respect to, uh, protecting the public safety and public health. Um, if you could make a finding somehow that this has an adverse impact on public safety or public health, uh, or it's, uh, uh, in, in some other sort of very subjective way, uh, not compliant with, with that overall kind of object, a subjective standard, you could perhaps make such a finding. I don't know if that answers your question or not. Probably not.
I do see at least one neighbor, hold on. Pinch, do you want to say anything?
Um, well, I, I live at 191 State Street, Tom Pinchbeck, and, uh, I mean, I do hear that picking up the pickleball, does it exist? It's, uh, I'm pretty far away from it, but, um, I'm just a concerned neighbor, that's all.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I'm gonna mute you again, Tom. Um, any other comments or questions from commission members? Do we have a motion, George?
Yes.
Someone like the?
I, I think, excuse me, I think there's somebody in the audience that wants to comment.
Is that Bunny? You want to say it, Bunny?
Yes, I do. Yes, um, I'm a pickleball player. I've been, uh, playing on the Adams Court since the lines were painted. And, um, we play on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and it is a group of about 20 seniors, and the town uses the court Monday, Wednesday and Friday, so they're well-used. Um, I, I coached high school tennis for 37 years, and every high school has pickleball in the gymnasiums now. So it's the fastest-growing sport in the United States at this moment. And I think the, uh, two couple pickleball courts over at the Adams site were, would be excellent. Um, as far as the noise level, it's a wiffle ball and it hits a solid paddle, kind of like a ping pong paddle. Um, it's not terribly noisy and the players don't cheer and make noise, so it's, it's just.
We play in different games. I play in a different game.
Well, it all.
You make a lot of noise?
Yeah.
It all depends on the crowd, right?
Yeah, it does. But it is a very fast-growing sport, and I know that young people, I've given lessons to young, a lot of young people with pickleball. It's a quick learn. That's why they like it. Takes, takes months to learn to play tennis. It takes you half an hour to learn to play pickleball. And, um, I, I'm, I'm all for it, that's all. I think it's a great idea. It's a good spot. There's a piece of land over there that's not used for anything else, and, uh, it's a perfect spot for it. So I, I'm all for it and I hope you do it.
Well, again, you know, I think one of the, my overriding concerns is that neighbor directly to the south, installing four pickleball courts facing them. And, you know, well, we who play the game might not think of it as a nuisance noise. If you're on your back patio and you're hearing it from, you know, three to six at night, multiple nights a week, it, there are certainly cases around the country that are being brought with respect to the noise. But I don't believe George says it's something we can deny this for. So, is that correct, George?
Uh, I think that's a fair assumption.
All right, I don't mean to lead the witness, but.
Yeah, that's fine. And, you know, I'm not a witness, but I'm also not, I'm not qualified to give you legal advice.
Bye, George. Um, so is there, is there a motion?
Well, we're still keeping the tennis courts there also, right? It's just.
Yeah, they're moving the tennis courts to make the parking lot bigger and then moving, and then building the pickleball courts on the far side of the tennis courts.
To, to the south, to the south of the tennis courts, right?
Do you want to see the plan, Matt?
Yes, please.
Sure.
Page five.
Is that sheet one or? No, let me see here.
I'd point out that took Mike Ott 12 sheets to, uh, to display this.
I, I will screenshot, hold on. This is.
Get it off the website.
This is by, this is the best, um, example. So the parking lot's being increased in size. The tennis courts are being slid this way, and then four pickleball courts are being installed here.
Wow.
And the neighbor.
That's great. That's great.
All right, so, so any questions on, I could stop that. Sorry. Okay. Um, so do we have a motion somewhere?
I'll make a motion. Voted that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission approve a site plan application for the town of Guilford to construct tennis courts, pickleball courts and parking at Adams Middle School, 233 Church Street, MAP 53, Lot 17, as shown on Elizabeth Adams Middle School Tennis Courts and Pickleball Courts dated April 2020, prepared by Summerhill Engineers and Surveyors, 12 sheets. Uh, this application is approved with the following conditions. One, uh, the environmental planners' comments from May 19th, 2020. I believe one of them was about tree removal. Um, this application is approved based upon a finding that it conforms with the zoning code.
I'll give it a second.
Discussion? With no discussion, I'll call the vote. Uh, Richard Wallace?
Aye.
Sean Cosgrove?
Aye.
Scott Edmund?
Yes.
Matt Yurzinski?
Yay.
Frank?
Yes.
Alan? Sorry, Alan's muted.
Yeah, I'm muted.
I'm sorry you're not, now you're unmuted. Alan?
Yeah, you had me muted. I was trying to bring something up and I get muted somehow for the whole conversation here.
Oh, well, sorry. Um.
And my name isn't Linda.
Hi, Linda. What's your vote, Linda? Are you in favor of this, Linda?
Oh my God. I'm gonna abstain from this one.
Abstain. Uh, and I will vote no. The motion carries.
Could I change that?
No, it's gonna carry no matter what.
All right, I know, but I gotta say at least, I want to say no.
All right, I'll allow you to change your vote from abstain to no. The motion.
Thank you, even though I'm muted.
Anymore, Linda. Okay. Uh, new application, Town of Guilford Marina Parking Lot, 535 Whitfield Street, MAP 29, Lot 101, Zone C2M, Site Plan Approval for Designation of Three Parking Spaces for Vendor Use, AKA Food Truck, Receive and Take Action. Who's presenting for this?
I am.
Great, talk to us.
Uh, this is, uh, just quickly, um, I will get a, a image here to show you. So the town has an ordinance, um, regarding peddlers, and, um, part of this ordinance includes, um, a preferred locations throughout the town, uh, for vendors. If you're not on a town road, um, they're either, they are town-owned parcels that are, uh, preferred for, uh, food vendors and the like. Uh, one of the preferred, so all, all of these properties are subject to a site plan approval with the Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, however, a site plan approval has not been obtained, um, for, for most of these preferred locations. Um, and so, uh, in working with the first selectman and the police, deputy police chief, um, and the dock master, we, we tried to get a plan up here for the Marina Parking Lot, um, to designate a, an area for food vendors. Um, and, and the location, this was after discussion with, uh, all, all those parties I, I just mentioned, um, they're recommending down at the town marina, the last three parking spaces adjacent to the boat launch area, um, where they would allow, um, a maximum of two food vendors, um, uh, to park in, in, in a space here, the, the outside spaces while allowing the interior space to be open, um, to pedestrians to order food a, a, at the windows of these vehicles. Um, so this was, uh, you know, these, these spaces will be designated, um, just with a, a basic sign, a parking sign, um, at the end of the space. Um, and that, that's pretty much the, the gist of it. Um, I will be in the future working, um, with, uh, the, the deputy chief, again, locating safe locations, um, and some of the others are on, uh, park areas. So we'll be, we'll be meeting with Rick Maynard as well to try to develop some additional site plan approvals, um, so that the individual vendors won't need to come to the commission. Um, it would just be on a first come, first served basis, um, after they obtain their permits through the police department.
All right.
So that's the overall aerial, and this is just a detail. It's roughly the, the, the furthest spaces, um, a little over 26 feet long, almost 27 feet, and we've got a width of about 26 feet as well, uh, for these three spaces. So potentially a longer vehicle can come on the end and, and a shorter vehicle here on this, this particular location.
So Erin, the, so the police was comfortable with, uh, any potential safety issue with the dock operation of the dock there?
Right. So staff, once this, this proposal came through, um, the town engineer, myself, we had a couple of questions. There, there's quite a bit of a slope here, um, and, and, because of its proximity to, to the launch. Um, they felt that the vehicles, um, would still have adequate surface, uh, level surface for preparing foods, and, um, that this was actually the least traveled area of, um, the parking lot. We talked about options, um, over in this area here where the newest, um, kiosk sign was, and potentially a pull-through and a parking spot here. They were concerned at the speed that cars often whip around this corner here. Um, staff had recommended potentially these locations adjacent to, uh, parking, you know, a landscaped island just because of their proximity to the seating. Uh, however, those are ADA spaces, um, and they're looking to have, most of these are, are Marina permit parking areas, and they like to keep this overflow area for trailers, um, from the boat launch. Um, so really that kind of left them with, with this strip here. Um, and as this was one of the longer locations and furthest from, from the actual circulation of traffic here, they, they felt it was, uh, safe.
And I had a second question with the, and I don't need to get, we don't need to get too much in the ordinance, but with the ordinance, is there requirements, uh, for removal of trash? Um, how responsible are they for their patrons' removal of trash and so, such things?
Right, they may, um, that's a good question. I don't have the ordinance in front of me to, to break that down. I apologize. I didn't, uh, include that in here. Um, yes, I mean, we have, we've had some vendors, uh, regularly down at the green. Um, you know, we have two trucks that, that are regularly there. Um, I don't believe they're, I, I, I think they include their own garbage. Um, you know, there, there are multiple pages in the ordinance of, of regulations, no additional signage, things like that. They can't.
I imagine that they have some stipulations relating to trash.
Right, and they can't, you know, they're not going to be putting out tables or anything here. There was talk about potentially expand, expanding this whole area, you know, as a hatched-off area for, for vendors, and we kind of discourage that to reduce the amount of pedestrians, uh, kind of hanging out in this area as, as these are active parking spaces.
Okay.
So it, it's, you know, a site plan, if the dock master, as they're the first ones down, you know, the, they're down, uh, at the parking lot on a daily basis, if, if they start to notice issues and, and reports back to the police department, you may find that they come back and, and.
Hey, Erin, so, so is this, do, do these guys go into like a lottery to get a, get a ticket to, to park down there?
No.
Number two, was the consideration given to just starting with one to see if it works rather than starting with two? Because that, even on spring days, there are a lot of, there are a quarter few people that are, you know, traveling through the marina just to park and sit and contemplate the sound.
Right. Um, so, our first question.
Was the consideration given to just starting with one to see if it works well rather than starting with two? And I'm gonna cut back.
When, when I discussed this with, um, our retired police chief, Jeff Hutchinson, uh, it really didn't make a difference to him, honestly. They, they were okay with They were okay with one versus two. You know, he wanted to designate the three spaces just to allow for some buffer area, but it is a first-come, first-served basis. They have not come up with a lottery system at this point. I think some of this is gonna be trial and error to see, you know, is somebody looking to park there overnight to reserve their spot? Are we gonna have a line of trucks?
But are they daily permits?
No, it's a peddler permit. And so then you would have on a first-come, first-served basis
It all depends on how early you get there.
Sure, sure. Where you, where you want to be and, you know, it does exclude state highways, so that's why you'll see the concentration along the green only on Broad or Park Street.
Park Street.
Not on Whitfield or
No, it's on, it's on Broad, it's on Broad Street.
Right.
It makes sense to me, you know, again, maybe they can work this out on a going-forward basis to, you know, come up with some type of a reservation system. Because if you're gonna come all the way, you know, I don't know where, I think one of the food trucks that's on the green regulations from West Haven, if you're gonna drive your food truck from West Haven, if you could be assured of having a spot, you're gonna be much more likely to want to come do it than have to do a first-come, first-served, but we'll let you and the police and the vendors figure out a way that works well for everyone.
We'll let the police do that.
Yeah, but, but, but Phil's making a great point, because if, if there are vendors who knows there's a great traffic area in an affluent community during the summertime, you could have four or five trucks fighting over a spot at five o'clock in the morning.
Right.
I'm just, you know, I'm just pointing out that that could happen, so it's a
We should, we should, we should suggest that they try and come up with some way to reserve a spot, but that is probably
I agree.
Our site plan change.
Isn't that the area where they launch the boats?
It is.
Now, we're gonna have
That's right here, Alan.
Now, we're gonna have boats on trailers that the guys are backing down to put in the water and you're gonna have people alongside
But that's a really wide berth.
Yeah.
I know what it is, I put my boat in there, it's wide enough for two boats.
Right, right. And the parking lot does expand.
Excuse me, if you've got people trying to back up their trailer on a twenty-five or twenty-foot boat and he's gotta watch either side and he's gotta watch the person that's already in the water with a boat, and now he's got people on the other side, which is where the, where the vendor is, and kids running back and forth in there, wouldn't that be a little on the dangerous side?
So Erin, you're talking about, I mean, I backed my boat in here too. If you've got a twenty-foot boat, I mean, that's a big area.
I know it is, it's wide enough for two boats.
Right.
Two boats to back in, but what I'm saying is you're gonna have boats on that right-hand side, I mean, you're gonna have customers on the right-hand side that are buying stuff. You got people with kids and a lot of time they don't watch them. I mean, the police department looked at it, so I don't have, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to tell the police department what to do, but to me, I've had a big boat and when you're backing it up, your mind is on getting it in the right side, getting it away from the wall or the, or the sides of the ramp, and you gotta watch the other people and it's gonna be tough enough, I don't have no worry about a little kid running across and, you know, that's the only thing I'm wondering, but I imagine the police department looked at it, so that would be my question.
That was, that was staff's question as well, Alan.
Well, yeah, I mean, in addition to sort of this Jamie, you know, boater's concerns, I'm just trying to think about the user experience. I mean, when I go down there, yep, I do, as Sean says, sort of look at the water, but we also try to sit at those picnic tables, which are about as far away from the food trucks in their proposed location. So I just, I just wonder if, if some more consideration could be given to kind of like conjoining those ideas, you know, put the food where the seats are, or maybe what we're seeing in Philip's screen share here is there's a little, I don't know that far end where we're proposing to do it, but it looks like there's a flat space there out past the last parking spot.
Not so much here, but certainly up here, they, if they so choose, they could potentially put some picnic tables. I don't, I don't know, but, you know, like
There are picnic tables up there.
Are there?
Yeah, there's picnic tables up there.
No, the picnic tables are down here.
Yeah.
But, you know, maybe at some point there could be consideration of putting some up here to get people out from the street and up onto the top. Again, that's really not in front of us now, I think it's a great idea, and I think the more we have the trucks here, the better. And I think it'll draw for people coming down.
Erin, is there any, any time limit of when they can be pedaling their wares down there?
Um, yeah, let me pull up the ordinance.
I know they close at ten PM, but I don't think they'd be down there that late anyhow.
Hold on one second here.
Hey, while you're looking that up, Erin, I'll just say, my only concern with picnic tables along the, the stone jetty that faces the water is, you know, even on a, on a mild, mildly windy day, people are gonna let stuff blow up right off the picnic table, they're never gonna pick it up, it's gonna blow into the water. So I think limiting the space and having the vendors have some responsibility for, as Scott brought up, have some responsibility for, you know, the inevitable, and it is inevitable.
Yes.
Refuse. You know, don't expand the area that people can dine with disposable stuff. It just, it's a disaster.
To mention, or to follow up on that, Sean, the ordinance does require adequate provisions to be made to collect, store, and dispose of all used containers, wrappings, and other disposables connected with the peddling operation, which containers shall either be placed inside or affixed to the vehicle, mobile food establishment, or push cart, and they need to be acceptable to the health director.
And, oh, and, and is the enforcement of that provision up to you?
No, this is an ordinance that is enforced by the police department. So the police respond to all
Here's the, here's the other thing I'll say, if you're, if you're going over here to get your empanada and you're going down here to eat it, when you're done, you're gonna drop it in that garbage can. You're not gonna walk back to the truck.
But if you go back to your car to eat your enchilada, okay, and your kids are in and out of the car, they're gonna drop these papers right where they are. Okay, that's, and I don't see how you're responsible for picking it up, he's not gonna get out of his wagon and start running around picking up paper.
You also got a dock
Okay, I would be reassured if this thing does not, if within a week or two, what Alan just said, and, you know, I can see it happening, I'm not gonna fault Alan for making that point, they'll pull a permit. This is not a, I just want to be reassured this permit does not, you know, a public's permit doesn't last until, you know, September first or Labor Day, because if this thing does not work, we don't have to want to have people down there policing litter all summer long.
I mean
I know, I know what the problem is because I am a warden and I clean up my beaches around where I am right now, and these people are very sensitive about making sure that it's cleaned, but I'm always finding stuff all the time. And this is without a vendor. This is just people that come and go out clamming and come back in and they have their kids and sometimes they have a blanket on the beach with their wives and everything, and they'll come back in, by accident, they drop something or something like that, and so I'm there to clean it up. But the point is here, like he was saying, it's a pretty windy area down there, and if that stuff flows in the water, now, I don't know about the rest of you, but I'm upset. I'm upset about the balloons, the plastic balloons, never mind. Piece of the paper that they're gonna float off when the kid lets his, lets his piece of paper just under his hot dog or something, he lets it go and then the parent didn't see it and it goes into the water.
Right, but remember the primary winds are coming this way.
Oh, so we're saved, okay.
No, I'm just, I'm saying primarily, but, and you gotta, I'd rather not assume the worst of people, and if it doesn't work out and there's a garbage problem, we can revisit this, or, you know.
Phil?
Yeah.
Got one. You also got involved in this, all they're asking us is to clear three spaces for them. You've got a dock master that's down there a lot. You've got a Marina Commission that's responsible for the overall maintenance and running of the whole place. So why, you know, let's call it mute, let's do it as a test, give them the three-part, if it doesn't work out, there's gonna be a lot of complaining.
Just to clarify, the, the control over this parking space is, is under the Board of Selectmen. So that's who, that, that authority was, was determined by town council. So, and the Board of Selectmen is, you know, overall who, who created the ordinance, the ordinance itself in, does, does designate not only, well, town parking lots at Jacobs Beach, Chittenden, Shaffin, Lake Quanapog, Bittner, Town Hall, the Marina, and Guilford Lakes Golf Course are designated as the preferred peddling, peddler vending locations for mobile food establishments and other vehicles, including push carts.
And Erin, Erin, can, can they rescind by loca- Can they, can they rescind the permit by location?
Well, they're not actually rescinding the permit, but they are the owners of the property, just like any other owner can come in and decide, okay, you approved a house at this particular location, but I'm gonna tear the house down. That's Board of Selectmen come back and say, well, you approved Marina or parking here at the Marina for, for trucks, I'm asking you to disapprove it. I don't
In a similar fashion, we discussed the parking lot at Town Hall as a potential location, and realistically, that's not
No.
Probably gonna happen, and so that application for site plan approval probably won't be made by the town. So I think that's how they're
Do we have a motion? Yes. Can someone make a motion? You do have a motion, yeah, somewhere.
I'll second.
I got the motion.
You wanna read the motion before we second?
Let's, let's read the motion, yes, yes.
Order that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission approve a site plan revision for the town of Guilford to allow peddler vending at the town marina, 535 Whitfield Street, map twenty-nine, lot one oh one, as shown on application dated five, 2020. The application is approved with the following conditions, that three parking spots are allowed for this use with two vendors allowed separated by a parking space. The application is approved based on its finding that it conforms with the zoning code.
Someone like to second it?
I will second.
Thank you, discussion? Okay, I live literally about as close as anyone could live to this, and I'm fully in favor of it. I think it'll be great for the boaters, I think it'll be great for people that go down to the marina and look at the water, if they want to get something to eat, they can get something to eat. If they want, they don't, they can enjoy the water. You know, if you want to launch your boat and take lunch to go, that's great.
The only thing I'll say is we seem to weigh very heavily on our resources and public views in parking two box trucks or food trucks that are twenty feet, sometimes in length, fourteen feet high, walking billboards right there where clearly in the overhead, you see cars are parked. I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent in favor of this.
I'm not in favor because it's too close to the water for garbage to be floating off and into the water. No one's gonna go in the water to get it, and when it's too late, then we say, oh gee, what did we do wrong? I don't see that you have to have a food car. I mean, I want these people that are independent businesses to, to make it. I mean, it's hard enough making a living, and when they're trying to do that, God bless them, I'll help them any way I can. But when you get close to the water like that with, with stuff that's gonna float through the air and stuff that's gonna go in my, in the water, that upsets me. So I do not want to see this, not necessary to have this thing there, and I'm definitely against it, it's too close to the water. If I had a, a vendor down here in front of my house, I guarantee you the sound in front of my water out here would be full of junk, not because they intentionally wanted to do it.
All right, any other comments? Okay, with that said, we have a motion and a second, don't, who seconded?
I think I, I think I
I think you pre-seconded, but you can, you can second if you'd like.
I'll second, second.
I'll call the vote. All in favor of approval of the site plan revision for the Guilford Marina? Richard Wallace?
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove?
Hi.
Scott Edmund? Was that a yes?
Yes.
Sorry, I will vote yes. Matt Yurzinski?
Oh, you're muted.
Oh?
No.
Frank?
No.
And Alan?
No.
The motion passes. Thank you for your input, I do appreciate it always. Last item is the approval of the minutes from the five-twenty meeting. I read them and they appear to be substantially correct.
I agree.
So would someone like to make a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the five-twenty meeting.
Thank you, seconder, please. Anyone? Bueller?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, I'm happy to do this as a hand vote of approval of the minutes.
I abstain, I abstain, I was not there, so.
Okay, the move, motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Richard, you can make a second, thanks. All in favor are saying goodnight.
All right.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate all your work.
Goodnight.
Goodnight.